Hey, good morning. I'm going to just start with a short prayer. Once again, Father, we thank you for all your blessings. Be with Council today, give us wisdom. Thank you for our staff. Thank you for the MD people. And thank you for this Easter season coming up and all that it means, Father, in your name.
Good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call this meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, there are four proposed agenda additions. First one would be 7.3.8 Moose Lake Trail Tender. The second one would be 7.5.2 Gravel Trailer Purchase. The third one would be 7.5.3 Water Distribution Pump Replacement for Ardmore and Fort Kent. And under Closed Session, 10.1 CAO Overview under FOIP 21 and 24.
Yeah, sorry, I'll 7.5.2, I didn't quite write fast enough.
That'd be the gravel trailer purchase?
I hope I can read my writing after. Okay, I need adoption. If there's any, if there's no more additions, I need adoption. Thank you, Counselor Krevjak. Any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie? I need the, well, first of all, I just want to thank staff for all they do and all this agenda and all the, there's thousands of hours and I just want to make sure they know that we appreciate all the staff and all they do. Adoption of the minutes of regular meeting of council. Need a motion? Yep, thank you.
Do you like a motion to approve?
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Swiger. Any discussion on that, seeing none, all those in favor? Public hearings business, right, so we'll just go to new, any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move on to 7.2.2 Ditch Cleaning Program?
Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
There are approximately 20 known drainage ditches and potentially up to 50 more that the MD have constructed over the many past decades. Many of these ditches cut through public and private land to mitigate overland flooding. Excuse me. Currently, the maintenance and cleaning of these drainage ditches is being done in-house through the Transportation and Utilities Department. The regulatory requirements and environmental approvals have taken extensive time to get approved. As well, the ownership of the ditches and responsibility for ditch maintenance has been discussed and remains a challenge. On the regular meeting of council dated March 24, 2021, council requested administration to initiate a proposal to address these concerns and bring forward a recommendation for consideration. Taking into consideration council's request, we are providing three possible options for future cleaning and maintenance of the drainage ditches within the MD. Provided as well is the current drainage map marked Appendix B. So Appendix A, we have put three options together. And Option A is the current practice we are currently doing. The recent improvements on the current practice have been the initial cleaning by the MD, and then, once it's cleaned by the MD, it is cleaned then or maintained then by the landowner. We've put some pros and cons in place for each of the options. The pros to what we are doing now, we do have an MD Environmental Specialist in place that handles the approvals. The MD operators in place, we have MD operators in place to do the ditch cleaning itself. There's a reduction in liability claims due to improper cleaning. It's cost-effective and it uses in-house labor during non-peak hours. And the MD prioritizes effort strategically. And a con on this is other work may take over the priority of ditch cleaning. Our second option would be a landowner incentive payment, so the land, we pay the landowner to clean the ditch itself. The pros would be the landowners doing the work and not the MD. But we see a lot of cons with that option, being the environmental liability if the landowner is not compliant, the upstream and downstream landowner conflicts that may occur, increased administration to manage the program, the liability and safety concerns. An example would be the ground disturbance, the lack of consideration of regulatory requirements and consultation, and the economic impact of buried lines from industry may be risk of damage. And then we have a third option, which would be a landowner incentive with MD oversight. So this would be the landowner doing, doing the work itself. We give them incentive payment, but they're being guided by our team. Some of the pros to that would be, we would reduce the risk of non-compliance from just the landowner incentive. Environmental approvals would be in place before that, prior to the project being started. The MD has consideration of upstream and downstream issues. Some of the cons would be the liability for non-compliance by landowner, so he doesn't follow what we guide him to do. The MD would need to supervise the project, and the landowner may not wish to cooperate with the MD, and there would be high administration costs. Currently, there's $800,000 in the 22 Infrastructure Services Operating Budget allocated for drainage issues. And our recommended action would be that council directs administration to proceed with the current practice in place for the municipal drainage ditch cleaning program as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yep, Deputy Reeve Swiger.
Yeah, I had a question about the admin, MD admin costs per half-mile. It says $5,000 admin costs, and that's Option A.
Okay.
And then it's $10,000 to $15,000 per half-mile costs to clean the ditches or clean the, yeah. So I'm not sure what the admin costs, admin costs, is that covered?
Through the Reeve, the administration costs would be for the environmental team getting these permits in place?
Okay. And so once that's done though, that's done for every sort of thing? I think that's our holdup on a lot of these, isn't it? It's the permitting by the province to do this, I think? I think that's kind of the holdup on a lot of these? Is that a question for the CAO?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Swiger, yeah, the environment approvals are seeming to take longer and longer and longer, and that is a, and of course, every time we have to pick up the phone or send an email to check the current status of an application, that all has a, that all has a built-in cost to us. One of the other issues that we're bumping into, and I think this is going to be a policy question for council in the not-too-distant future, is we are starting to get requests from landowners regarding ditches that are 30 and 40 years old that the MD may have put in to help out a farmer 40 years ago, and then, and they now believe that those are MD drainage ditches, so we should be going in and continuing to do the work. That is, that is popping up more and more now, and I think we have to have some discussion about these historic ditches that might have been put in 30 or 40 years ago as to whether we still want to maintain those ditches, and of course, the additional cost that comes with those ditches.
Mr. Reeve, that was kind of a, one of my other concerns or questions, because in the proposal and background, it says 20 known ditches and potentially 50 or more that the MD may have constructed over the past decade. But then it goes on and says that currently, the maintenance and cleaning of these ditches is done in-house, so I'm not sure if you're referring to all 70 of them or just 20. Like, I think there's probably a lot of ditches there that we, we aren't doing anything with because we don't have provincial, or we don't have, yeah, I guess the provinces' blessings to environmentally go clean them, so. I'm not sure, like, Option A is kind of status quo, what we're doing now. I'm not sure if that's working so well. Maybe it is. I guess that's why we're discussing it.
Yeah, also, if it is.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not working well. I mean, it's been great. They do a great job with it. I've had the, the pleasure of them coming in and doing lots of work in my ward. Fantastic job. Everybody's pretty happy with it. They clean up the rocks, they do the ditches, and on the gentleman row, it's been fantastic, so. It's been working. Like, in regards to private ditches, what I mentioned, I mean, they're private ditches. I have one running through my yard. I don't know where it came from or where it is, but it doesn't belong to anybody, but it's in my ditch. If I don't maintain it, then I flood out my neighbors, so. But then again, I don't want the MD coming onto my property and tearing it up either, so.
So, Mr. Reeve, that was kind of my concern. I'm not saying they're not doing a good job with the ones they're maintaining. I'm, I'm just thinking there's, like, the 50 that they listed that are sort of unknown, and it's an unknown. And it's, those ditches are probably causing problems for people, but we're not really handling those because we're not, I don't know, we need, we need to get the province involved, I guess, to license them or something? I'm not sure the details there, but is that something that we're kind of still working toward, or do we want to?
Thank you, Mr., through the Reeve, to Counselor Swiger and to the rest of council. I would suggest that, I think we're comfortable with the status quo, but I do believe that one of the changes we need to discuss from a policy level is on those other 50 ditches. It's not whether or not we should be getting Alberta Environment Approval, as to whether or not they're even our responsibility if they're on private land. A lot of these were handshake agreements from 40 years ago. We, in many cases, we don't understand or have any prior knowledge as to why that drainage ditch was put in. Now we're getting people complaining that those drainage ditches that were put in by the MD, potentially to help out a farmer 40 years ago, are now causing other impacts and causing flooding that we're now expected to go in because we put the ditch in. And I think at some point, very, in the very near future, and I've already asked the General Manager, Bispolko, to start working on a policy for council's consideration, that these historic ditches, we look at them and decide which ones we actually should be maintaining and which ones we should not be maintaining. Because I'm getting, I'm getting emails on a regular basis now to go on private land because the MD put a ditch in, you know, 30, 40, 20 years ago, and that we have no record as to why. There's no council resolution supporting that. Did these things just happen? Often, they were handshake agreements. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the status quo, but I do agree, I think we need to talk about these other 50 ditches. It's my opinion that if it's not a registered ditch and a registered drainage corridor, we probably should have little to do with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Reeve, so the 50 ditches, that it was kind of like rough, you know, it's a rough number, I think. Is that, are they mapped on Appendix B? The extra 50? Or is it? I'm just kind of curious where we came, we said 20 and then another 50 sort of thing. I just wondered if Appendix B shows, shows all the concerns that we've had over the last, I don't know, two years?
Yeah. This map is a bit of a work in progress, ongoing, as we collect drainage issues. We pull out them on this map here and track information regarding those drainage issues. The 50 ditches that are showing in the RFD are more a case of us speculating on what's out there that's not covered. I know when we sat down with Conrad, and that Conrad's our environmental coordinator, he was, he came up with that number based on the stuff that we've been kind of have coming in, trickling into us, and as it trickles it in, we're collecting this information, putting it on this map, and putting it on a spreadsheet, finding out what the impacts of the drainage are, and listing those on the spreadsheet, as well as identifying any old registrations or easements or agreements that do exist. It takes a fair bit of administrative time to track this information down, and so when the information, when the issue does come up, we compile it. And I know every year, we come up with an annual 12 to 18 locations that we're kind of targeting. These ones are the ones we're going to work on this year, and those are the ones that Conrad will spend time researching, some of the old registrations and some of the old information, because that's what we're suffering from right now, was just a lack of information on some of this stuff. And we're picking away at it, and hopefully, we're moving in the right direction, but that's, so those 50 aren't largely on the map.
Yeah, they're pretty, it's like a big, big number.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of pulled out a bit.
So just a question, like, the number, the circled numbers on the maps, are those, like, there's 70, 71, 70, there's a ton there. Do those numbers, does it go from one to whatever the maximum number, you don't have a legend for those numbers, but?
Actually, I guess we had done, I had done an RFD, was it a month or two ago, on the drainage for our plan for 2022, and I don't think Counselor Swiger, you were, you were there that time.
Okay.
We do have a separate spreadsheet that each of these numbers has a line on.
Yeah, I remember that.
And.
I think I remember it from almost a year ago or something.
Yeah, and I guess we didn't attach it to this RFD because it had been attached to the previous one, but it is available if you'd like a copy of it. And that has, it started out as a list of one to whatever we went up to.
Yeah, we got all that information. Maybe you were at that meeting, so maybe we could just get him that information. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
Yes, counsel, if it is.
If, if administration's going to bring back all this, could I also get the information in regards to the Denanco drainage ditch and how that happened? Because if that is somewhat of a historic idea of what's going to happen to these unregistered ditches, that ditch costs us a lot. Because it's, you know, we created issues down, down the line and went into the beaver, and then next thing, you know, next thing you know, we're flooding out stuff, so I'd like to have that information.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion for Option A if that sounds like kind of the plan that admin would like to go with, and it seems reasonable, I guess.
Okay, Deputy Reeve Swiger makes the motion that council directs administration to proceed with the current practice for this drainage ditch cleaning program as presented. Any discussion, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. I guess, relocation. Follow.
So, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Today is the, is the, is the annual day of excitement, where the next 60 minutes will be full of scintillating and, and, and just heart-palpitating information. It's our, it's the annual, the annual presentation of our financial, of our financial audit, or audited financial statement. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Alliston. He's partnered with Metrics Group LLP, and he'll be presenting to council our 2021 audited financial statements for the NB of Bonneville. I'll leave it to Mr. Alliston as to how he would like, you know, questions to be handled. I also would offer to council that if this is the MD's audited financial statement, if council has questions, they would like to ask in private afterwards, that there is the opportunity for council to move into closed section without staff or anybody other than the auditor, if there are, if there are other questions that council has for the auditor that are of a confidential nature. So that being said, I would turn the podium over to Mr. Alliston, and, and we're ready to rock and roll.
Thanks, thanks for having me. Do you have my PowerPoint presentation, my chance? Oh, yeah. Thought maybe you had somebody exciting showing up earlier there, so. All right. Okay, well, yeah, thanks, thanks again for having me. We're here today to discuss the MD's, oh, thank you, financial, financial position for December 31, 2021. Usually, to start these presentations, I like to give a bit of an overview as to why we have an audit and the importance of it, and really, it's to enhance the degree of confidence of the intended users. So those users, main users being yourselves as counselors, municipal affairs, the province of Alberta, ratepayers, those that would have a vested interest in the financial performance of the municipal district. So this is achieved by us as auditors expressing an opinion, so we give assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So what that means, as auditors, we seek reasonable assurance, so it's a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute assurance, so we do not audit every transaction that happens during the year. Also, as auditors, we exercise professional judgment as well as professional skepticism, so a question in mind, we stay alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatement. So areas of concern for us would be cut off. We want to make sure that transactions that occurred in the fiscal year 2021 have been recorded in 2021, and those that are in 2022 have been subsequently recorded in that correct fiscal year. As well as revenue recognition, we want to make sure revenue is being recognized once performance obligations or services have been rendered, and also, their collectability of accounts receivable, so is your accounts receivable balance accurate at year end, or should you have a larger allowance in relation to the amounts owing? Another large estimate for the MD is your landfill closure and post-closure costs. We want to make sure that's accurate and being based on the most relevant information that we can obtain. Also, as auditors, a critical assessment of audit evidence, so has evidence been altered? Are we looking at actual source documents, or has anything been manipulated that has been, been given to us? So when it comes to the financial statements, on page 34 of the financial statements is our independent auditor's report. So at the top of that report, we give our opinion. We give our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards are the same standards that all government organizations report under across Canada. After that, we give our basis for our opinion, which is in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. And then the third part of the audit report identifies the responsibility of management and those charged with governance for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And then the second part of the audit report indicates our auditor's responsibility, which summarizes our objective, which is to obtain a reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So in conclusion, we're giving an opinion that the financial statements are in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards and are free from material misstatements. So now I'll go over some financial highlights for the year in relation to the, to the MD. So on this slide here, you'll see a snapshot of the Statement of Financial Position, so where the MD was at as at December 31, 2021. You'll see your financial assets, your cash and temporary investments increased about $4.8 million to $68 million from $38.6. So the MD had generated positive cash through its operating activities of $25 million. You then spent $800,000 on debt repayment, another $18 million on tangible capital asset purchases, and moved about $1.5 million net into your investments. After looking at the cash and temporary investments, your tax and grants and place of taxes receivable, so here you'll see your current taxes are up to $1.8 million or a $600,000 increase from current year to prior year. That's a 50% increase. Rears taxes increased as well to $115,000 owing at year end, or 11% increase, so left you about $3 million versus $2.3 million owing in the prior year. So your receivables in relation to some of these linear properties is trending up in relation to collection there. Your allowance for doubtful accounts increased slightly to $200,000, which left your tax receivable owing balance of 700, or increase of $713,000 from prior year to current year. Other receivables, so balances owing to the MD at year end, so receivables from other governments, that increased to $7 million, so that includes your MSI capital funding of $6.1 million. This was applied against a project to be collected subsequent to year end, as well as investment in the Canada Infrastructure Program of roughly $863,000. Receivables from other government, GST slightly down to $657 from 902, just in relation to there being just the November and December amounts, prior year contained October as well. And then leave the MD, again, with $8.8 million in receivables to be collected subsequent to year end. After looking at your receivables, you'll have a debt recoverable for local improvement, so it's a local improvement that's tied to a debenture, so $360,000 there. You collected principal repayment in the year, land held for resale of $345,000. And then your investments, so the MD has investments of $43.2 million at year end, that is the cost base of those investments, so it's made up of various fixed income securities, interest rates ranging from 2.22% to 2.8%, maturing between 2029 and 2031. So after looking at your investments, your total financial asset position is up to $124 million from $111, or a $13 million increase in your financial asset position in relation to additional grants that are owed, as well as the increase in cash balance from current year to prior year.
Mr. Reeve?
Yep.
Jeff, do you, should we ask questions as you go, or do you want to?
If you want to. Don't, don't bother me.
Wait, just, when you're, when you're going, when I was going through this too, the Statement of Financial Position is, is in here about four or five times?
Yeah, I just keep flipping back to it, so as I, I drill in on certain sections, I give you kind of a summary, and then I go back to it in relation to the presentation. Yeah.
Because in ours, it's just, it's throughout, so that, but that's what you wanted, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I continue on, like, when I get to deferred revenue, I'll just go into the summary, and then I just kind of flip back out to where, where I was. So after looking at your financial assets, your liability position, so what the MD owes at year end, so your accounts payable and accrued liabilities is at $8.2 million, so you have general trade payables of $6.2 in there, as well as government payables of $1.4 million, so that's in relation to the IMCP program, funding owed to Glendon there for, for $1.4 million. Deposit liabilities up to $3.3, so that's in relation, you have an additional amount in there, $1.7 million for the ID 349. Once that, once that is resolved on the asset turnover there, you'll know what to do with that money there, so it's just sitting in deposit liabilities for now. And then your deferred revenue of $7.7 million. So when it comes to your deferred revenue, your MSI 2021 allocation there of $5.3 million, revenue recognized on that is $1.1, so that was in relation to Murrell Creek Crossing Bridge replacement, about $802,000 was the, the main amount of the revenue being recognized there. Other additions in the year, municipal stimulus program, Canada Community Building Fund, or previously called Federal Gas Tax Funding, in the year was, was received. And then other revenues being recognized, Alberta Municipal Operating Support Grant of $1.2 million, so that was in relation to operational funding for COVID, COVID resources there, $1.2. And then it left the MD with $7.7 million owing at year end, so $4.2 million in MSI capital to be spent, $1.4 in municipal stimulus, and your federal gas tax funding of $1.3.
Mr. Reeve?
Yep.
Jeff, 2020, we, MSI didn't, we didn't get MSI in 2020?
You, yeah, you would have gotten your 2020 allocation. It would have been spent likely on a project, which is why there was no opening deferred revenue, whereas your 2021 allocation is in relation to a portion, or a main portion of it's in receivables, and then a deferred, and then a portion of it is recognized as revenue in the year.
Thank you.
So after looking at the deferred revenue, employee benefit obligations owing at year end, so $887,000, and then your long-term debt position at $11.2 million. So $11.2 million, total debt repaid in the year of almost $800,000. Interest paid on the debentures was $374,000, so the debentures matured between 2026 and 2033, with interest rates ranging from 3% to 6.375. The MD's debt limits, so your debt limits are calculated as 1.5 times your total operating revenues, so your total debt limit increased significantly this year, up to $142 million from 106. That's just in relation to the ID 349, additional tax revenue that comes in. Total debt that the MD has, $11.2, leaving you with a debt limit unused of $131 million, and a debt servicing limit unused of $22.5.
And Jeff, that long-term debt was for that road that we're maintaining or building?
So after long-term debt, your remaining liability is your landfill closure and post-closure of $2.8 million, so those get adjusted annually based on consumption that comes in, as well as adjustments to inflation rates and discount rates for lending, so $2.8 million owing as at today in order to reclaim those, leaving you with total liabilities of $34.2, or an increase of $3.7 million from prior year. So after looking at your financial asset position, less your liabilities, your net financial asset position increased by $9.2 million to $89.8. So this is where you get an indication of the financial health of the MD, so what this is telling you is that you do have sufficient financial assets in order to offset your, your current liabilities and be left with $90 million of excess cash for your net, net financial asset position. So after looking at that, your non-financial assets, so your large amount there being your tangible capital assets, so made up of your roads, water, sewer lines throughout the MD, in order to provide services throughout the MD. So to start the year, sorry, there's a typo there. It shouldn't be $796 million, it should be $282, $476 billion net book value there. You had additions in the year of $20.5 million. So various additions and construction in progress there, regional water line, $1.2 million. So various additions and construction in progress there, regional water line, one point two million. Township Road six thirty, about three million spent on that. Cold Lake Campground Expansion, about two point six million spent there. Kinnisou Adventure Park and Chairlift, about two point two million, and then various bridge replacements. So those are still remaining in construction in progress, but those are some of the the larger capital purchases in the year. Also, under machinery and equipment, you purchased a new sweeper as well as two new excavators. And then included in buildings are the Ardmore, Ardmore and Fort Kent Fire Halls, as well as the transfer amount for work done in in prior years. So those are new additions to the to the buildings in the year. So when you're looking at the asset schedule, what you'll notice here is you have twenty point five million in additions. Amortization is nineteen point six million. Amortization represents your usage of your assets. So when you purchase such as an item such as an excavator, if it's going to last five years, you take one fifth of that cost and recognize it in your operations throughout the year or throughout the next five years. So really what you're saying seen here is that the M D did have sufficient additions in order to replace the usage of of assets in the year. So it's not a direct science, but it kind of lets you know that you're maintaining your net book value and replacing your assets in the current year versus what's being used for services. So after looking at tangible capital assets, your next non financial asset being your inventory for consumption. So that's made up of thirty seven million from thirty four point five in the prior year. Of that balance, thirty five point eight million of that is made up of gravel and one point two million of that is parts, culverts, and supplies. Prepaid expenses at year end of six hundred eighty eight thousand left you a total non financial assets of three hundred nineteen million, or a one point six million dollar increase from prior year. So after looking at the net financial assets and non financial assets, the M D gets to its accumulated surplus. So the M D's accumulated surplus at year end, you'll see your unrestricted surplus increased to twenty five million from current year to prior year, so up to forty two from sixteen point nine. You did have a reduction in your restricted surplus as funds were transferred out of out of your other restricted surplus account, as well as your cash flow one in order to to purchase capital projects in the year. And then your equity and T C A. So that maintained at two hundred and seventy million current year versus prior. So your equity and T C A correlates with how much of your accumulated surplus is tied up in your assets within the M D. And then the remaining restricted surplus and unrestricted represent your total cash position. Also included in that cash position is your gravel and inventory, prepaid expenses, and then your long term debt portion. So this is a breakdown of how you work your way back to the hundred and thirty eight million from your surplus. So not all of it is tied up in the in the cash position. Once you take your cash, pay off your liabilities, you're left with the eighty nine point eight million net financial assets, plus your gravel inventory, prepaid expenses, and then long term debt associated with with your equity and T C A. So it just gives you a breakdown of what makes that up. So after looking at your statement of financial position, the next part of your financial statement is your statement of operations. So where the money came from in the year in order to provide the services within the M D. So you'll see your net municipal taxes are up to eighty two point two million versus sixty in the prior year. So thirty five percent increase the assessment value due to the I D three forty nine properties in the year. So that's why that increase is there. User fees and sales of goods at four point five million, consistent with prior year. Government transfers for operating, so you recognize your municipal operating stimulus money there of one point one million from deferred revenue. So that's why there's an increase in your government transfers for operating from current year to prior year. And then your investment income. So you're up to one point eight from one point two. So you did very good on your investments in the twenty twenty one fiscal year. You'll note in other revenue, two point seven million versus two point one. So you had an ink, one point seven million from C N R L and Senovis, as usual for work there, as well as an additional three hundred sixty seven thousand one time payment for S M B River Van Inc. in relation to to other other revenues. So at year end, the M D was at ninety four point eight eight million. So that's where you saw the increase in your debt limits as this number here correlates directly with that versus seventy one million the prior year. So a thirty three percent increase in relation to the I D three forty nine tax increase. So this pie chart here just gives you a breakdown of the percentages of what makes up your revenue. So your net municipal property taxes make up eighty seven percent of your total operating revenue. User fees make up five percent versus six in the prior year, and then government transfers for operating three percent and two percent. So the bulk of the the M D's money does come generated from its net municipal taxes. So after looking at how much revenues there are, the expenses by department. So you'll see your expenses by department, council administration and general government. So that increased to thirty three point six. So this is also correlated with the I D three forty nine tax increase, as twenty point seven million of that is paid out to transfers to other governments. So that's where the spike comes in that cost. Protective services were up to seven point two from six point six. So that was in relation to additional fire expenses from the consolidation with the vinyl regional fire. Municipal planning, egg service and economic development was at four point one million. Other changes here, road, street, walks and lighting, you'll see you're up to thirty one point two from twenty four. That's in relation really to amortization expense correlated in the roads, walks and lighting section, as well as five point eight million of gravel crushing that is that's budgeted for as an expense line item. So that left the M D at eighty seven point two million expenses versus seventy million in the prior year. So when you look at your total revenues less, oh, sorry, one more slide. So in relation to your expenses by function, this kind of bar chart, the line represents your budget. The dark blue represents your current year. The light blue represents your prior year. So you can see most things are at or just below budget. Obviously, council administration, general government was above in relation to the I D three forty nine, transfer to local governments of twenty million. So that caused that one to be skewed, as well as the road streaks, walks and lighting in relation to amortization expense. But once you back those out, they are in relation to to the budgeted amounts. So after looking at expenses by function, what is actually included in those is being cost. So salaries, wages and benefits are the M D's main expense of twenty one point one million. Amortization of nineteen point six, contracting and general services. So you had spent six point seven. You had budgeted nine point eight. There was additional budget items for for shoulder pull program, drainings and ditches, as well as gravel hauling in relation to contract and general services. Transfers to other governments. So that was twenty eight million versus ten. So in relation to the I D three forty nine money of twenty million of that. Materials, goods and supplies. So you had budgeted eighteen versus ten. So the budget amount includes five point eight million of gravel contracting, which is an expense budget line item, but the gravel is represented in your inventory for consumption. And then other of two point one million. So that's in relation to your provision budget for for bad debts, where your actual was only two hundred and sixty eight thousand of the three hundred and thirty three. So that's where the budget variance is there. So that left the M D again at eighty seven point two million versus a budgeted sixty six point one. So after looking at revenue and expenses, the M D ended up with an operating surplus of seven point six million. You then incur other income or transfers from government for capital purchases of two point six billion. So one point two of that was I C I P funding, and then one point two for M S I. So those were used on capital projects in the year. It left the M D with an annual surplus in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards of ten point eight versus twelve point five. So then we then take those annual surplus numbers, and at the back of the financial statement, there's a budget reconciliation note. Because the M D does budget for zero balance, we then work that ten point eight million back in relation to how the budget is performed. So amortization expense, which is a non cash item, gets added back. Net transfers to and from reserves. So they ended up with a net from reserve of fourteen million versus a budget of fifty eight point eight. Acquisition of tangible capital assets, you spent twenty point five nine seven versus a budgeted seventy one point one. And then other changes in relation to proceeds of tangible capital assets, so cash collected in relation to sale of prior assets. Principal debt repayments left you with an operating surplus of twenty five point two million at year end when you compare to your initial budget amount of zero. So with that said, annual surplus and of course, Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards of ten point eight million. Your net financial asset position increased to eighty nine million from eighty. So again, you have sufficient financial assets to cover your liabilities. I also have an audit findings report. But in summary, no significant controlled deficiencies, no unusual accounting policies or estimates. There are a couple unrecorded misstatements, and we didn't encounter any significant difficulties while performing our work. I just wanted to thank management and staff for all their efforts in getting us the information that we needed in order to complete our audit in a timely manner. If anybody has any questions on some of the financial highlights, I can definitely take them now before I dive into the audit findings report.
Yes, Counselor.
Good morning. In regards to your expenses by object, there's a lot of discrepancies what we had budgeted for to what the actuals were. Is yes, that is just like an alignment issue where we've used different line, like line items?
Exactly. So like when when you were budgeting for materials, goods and supplies, you had budgeted five point eight million in relation to gravel. So as you purchase that gravel, it actually ends up in your inventory on your statement of financial position, although it is a cash outlay in based on based on your budget. So some of those those items there will be picked up in this, more or less this reconciliation here at year end. That was the main one, as well as the transfer to other governments with the I D three forty nine for the twenty eight million being the actual versus ten point eight as being the the larger variances there.
Yeah. Could you explain the other, the recovery part?
Oh, the other was based on provisions. So based on an amount expected to not be collected for for taxes. Was that the was it the two million amount? Whereas the change in the allowance was only based on two hundred sixty eight thousand.
Any other question? Yes, Counselor. So I have to be reading though. So I. Jeff, on operating revenue, the other, we just kind of talked about other, but I'm not, I don't really like the name other. Case of revenue, I'm not sure what it is, but.
Yeah, so we've.
Two point one nine million.
Yes, most of that comes from the some of the local oil and gas companies that pay for, that have agreements to send money to to the M D. So I mean, we could look to definitely change the wording of that. We've kind of always just had it had it in there. But yeah, definitely one point eight million of that comes from C N R L and Senovis agreements with the M D.
For like road?
The road, yeah.
Building or maintenance or something sort of thing? And I'll just ask about gravel, because I kind of ask every year. How do we, are we doing all right? Sort of measuring our gravel every year?
Yes. So this year, we had the measurements done. So in the past, we've always had a write a write down versus we always felt the compaction rates over time, the gravel pits keep compacting, and then the measurements are being done. And then we've kind of been writing off gravel based on the measurements. This year, we actually wrote the gravel up a bit. So based on the measurements, there was more gravel there than what how we had initially adjusted to. So previously, we had about a four million. Now I think we're about three point four, three point something like that in relation to the to the gravel. So we keep working, obviously, to get that as accurate as we can. Definitely, it's it's definitely tough with the with the large piles to make sure that that's all there. But, you know, the engineers are doing the best job they can, and we keep looking at the compaction rates to make sure that the M D's gravel is is accounted for correctly at year end.
Thank you.
But it is definitely getting, I find it's getting more more accurate at year end. That's good to see that a bit of a recovery in the the amounts too. We're expecting that to kind of maybe increase and get get back to more of where it was initially measured from.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
I can dive into the next one. Yeah, perfect. Awesome. Can I use this thing still? No, it won't be? Okay, I'll get you to scroll to the next page then. Okay, so yeah, so this is our our audit findings report for the M D's audit for the fiscal year, December thirty one, twenty twenty one. So just a quick summary, I'll just discuss responsibilities, materiality. I'll go over audit results, so areas of focus on the audit, risks in those areas, and then the type of procedures that we perform in order to mitigate that risk. And if we had any significant findings that should be brought to the attention of council. I'll go over some unrecorded misstatements, and then I'll talk about appendix for asset retirement obligations, and what that could mean to the M D's financial statements in the next couple of years. So the next slide. So when it comes to our executive summary, just quickly, this report is really just to promote two way communication between ourselves, the auditors, and yourselves as counselors, just to give you an update based on our audit plan in relation to our findings. We feel that we are independent of the M D, so we do not hold a financial interest or have an economic dependence on the M D. In order to finalize the audit, we'll complete our subsequent event procedures up to today. We'll obtain signed management representation. We'll complete our required communication, which is what we're doing right now. And then we'll obtain evidence of council's approval of the financial statements. And then and then we'll be able to issue signed audited audit report. Changes from the audit plan, so there was no no significant changes in relation to our audit plan when it comes to our audit findings report. When it comes to responsibilities, I spoken about this earlier, but mainly our our responsibility is to audit the financial statements in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards, and then to ensure that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. The next page at the top discusses responsibility of management, those charged with governance, and then materiality. So materiality from an audit standpoint is an indication of the what the user's view of the financial results. So we use three percent of operating expenses, or one point eight million in this case, as our benchmark. So what we're saying is if your annual surplus of eleven million were to increase by one point eight million or decrease by one point eight million, a user of the financial statement may have a different view on the outlook of the M D's performance. So you may think that that's too high or too low, but based on our professional judgment, we use it as a benchmark. So users being yourselves as counselors, municipal affairs. If your surplus were to increase or decrease by that amount, then our statements in turn would be materially misstated. So that's the benchmark that that we use. So when it comes to our audit results, one of our main areas of focus is really management override of control. So management's in a unique position where they can potentially manipulate the financial results, either by booking additional revenue, adjusting accounts to conform with budgeted amounts. So we use data analytic tools where we 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 look at the entire general ledger. These these computer automated techniques look for specific types of journal entries or suspicious journal entries, such as entries maybe posted on a Saturday night or specific round numbers in order to identify those for us for testing. We then test those to make sure that they are in line with with current business business relations. So we did not have any any significant findings in that area after after running those tests.
You're good to go, Mark.
So when it comes to another area of focus, revenue recognition, we want to make sure that your revenue is being recognized once restricted obligations have been met. So we look at your grant agreements. We reconcile the revenue back to the the capital asset or operating expenses to make sure that the revenue is being recognized once expenses have been incurred. So we had no significant findings there. When it comes to your tax revenue, we want to make sure that your taxes are being being taxed based on the rates approved by council, as well as the ending assessment value. And then we also recalculate your over under levy at year end. So we had no significant findings there as well. User fees and sales of goods, risk there from an audit standpoint is that you're charging the incorrect rates or that you're potentially missing sales in that area. So we do update our understanding of processes and controls. We perform additional substantive analytical procedures, as well as test a sample of revenue transactions to make sure that the user charges are accurate. So we had no significant findings there. Operating expenses, potential risk there is that you have expenses that are not in the correct fiscal year, or you potentially have fraudulent expenses that are not in relation to the M D. So here, we update our processes as well with your controls. We do test controls in relation to expenses, so approval rates. We also look at significant expenses as well as a sample of non significant expenses. So we are trying to test the entire population, not just large amounts, as well as look at expenses that have been recording your twenty twenty two general ledger to see if any of those should have been accrued for in the twenty twenty one fiscal year. So we had no significant findings there as well. So we had no significant findings there as well. Salaries, wages and benefits, potential here is that you have employees that, that don't exist, or employees that are being paid the incorrect rate, so we do update our processes and controls there. We do test internal controls within the MD, as well as reconcile your T fours and salaries back to the GL. So we had no significant findings there. Cash and temporary investments, we want to make sure that your cash balances are accurate at year end, so we do send out third-party confirmations to confirm that, as well as audit any reconciling items. So we had no significant findings there as well. Receivable balances, on the next slide, so risk there is that you do have receivables that are outstanding, that are deemed to be not collectible, or you have booked additional receivables as well, or sorry, overstating your, your revenue at year end. So we definitely want to update our understanding there of the municipal's policies for collections and provisions. We test subsequent receipts, so look, look for transact, or look for balances that are paid after year end. We perform additional substantive procedures over that, as well as reconcile that, the revenues in relation to the accounts receivable and deferred, to make sure that they're accurate. So I do indicate that we have no significant findings, however, we do have an adjustment in relation to the tax allowance in our unrecorded misstatement section. Tangible capital assets, so that's a main component of the MD's balance sheet here, so a lot of risk in that area in relation to having items that have been recorded as capital that should be expensed, or items that are expensed that should be capital, as well as having assets that are impaired, so they're no longer in active use or provide economic benefit to the MD. So we do update our, we do inquire with management, does any impairment, we attest significant additions, as well as recalculate amortization and gain and loss to ensure that those are accurate, so we had no significant findings in that area. Accounts payable, so the next one, that's really in relation to cutoff. So again, making sure that items have been recorded in the correct fiscal year, so we also do look at council meeting minutes after year end, to look for anything that potentially should have been, been accrued at year end. So we had no significant findings there. And the last one is your landfill closure and post-closure, potentially that, that could be misstated, so we want to make sure that we're adjusting for inflation rate, discount rates, to make sure that that's as accurate as it can be at year end. So we had no significant findings there as well. So when it comes to our significant finding area, when it comes to internal controls, so we did not reveal any significant deficiencies in internal controls. We feel your accounting practices, so policies, judgments and estimates are in line with your, with your policies, as well as in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. We encountered no significant difficulties, that should be brought to the attention of counsel. On the next page, get our management representation letter signed, and then we'll be able to issue signed financial statements. We will be submitting a management letter to, to the, to management, so if counsel does want to look at that, you can definitely communicate that with, with, with management to, to look at that. And then on the next page, unrecorded misstatements. So here, we have a few unrecorded items that the total unrecorded misstatement noted during the audit, so amounted to a three hundred and six thousand overstatement of the municipality's surplus. So I talked previously about materiality being one point eight million. We feel that these entries total three hundred and six thousand, if they were recorded, would, would change the MD's annual surplus, however, they are well below our materiality thresholds, so we don't feel that a user of the financial statement would have a different outlook or view on the MD's results. So the first one is just to adjust your, your egg service board inventory to actual. The second one here is to adjust your allowance for uncollected taxes. So we do an analysis of your, of your allowance, we kind of set ours based on everything that's two years and older, to be deemed as uncollectible, so that's totals about six hundred and seventy thousand in relation to your current tax balance owing at year end. Of that amount, two hundred and twenty-two thousand in relation to current year, and then the prior year's balance is about four hundred and eighty. So that's where that amount comes from. And then also to reallocate credit balances and accounts receivable, so sometimes people prepay, so we just make an adjustment there, that they should be recorded deferred revenue, but that was a two hundred and three thousand. So in summary, we don't feel that these adjustments would change the outlook of the, of the MD's financial position. The next one, appendix one, required communications, so we do not hold a financial interest, a position, personal and business relationship or economic dependence on the MD. Appendix two, I'll just get you to scroll through that, that's in relation to our management representation letter, so again, just a copy if anybody wants to look at, but pretty much just discusses that management was forthcoming with information. Appendix three lists new and revised accounting standards. So the main one here being public sector accounting standard thirty-two eighty asset retirement obligation. So here, the MD will be required to report assets that have a retirement obligation or a legal obligation associated with the retirement of certain assets, as well as of solid waste landfill sites, effective for your December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three fiscal year end. So in appendix four, I have discussion points on the asset retirement obligation. So really, it's defined as a legal obligation associated with retirement assets, so it's decommissioning a tangible capital asset, remediation of contamination of a tangible capital asset, post-retirement activity, or constructing other tangible capital assets. So we're really encouraging our clients to start going through their tangible capital asset list and identifying potential assets that could meet the definition of having a legal obligation to be cleaned up. So the landfill is obviously one that you currently have accounted for, that will change in the way it is accounted for come that fiscal year. Potential other ones could be asbestos in a building, you could have fuel tanks on public work sites that would need to be, that would need to be, be looked at for asset retirement obligation, potential other assets within the MD. So you really want to start investigating that, just in case any additional work is required in twenty twenty-three for those to be measured, so that they can be recognized in accordance with the accounting policy. So one of the benefits, I think, to this, although it is a bit cumbersome, and you, you know, why are you spending money in order to tell, for someone to tell you that you have to, you know, spend more money later in order to clean something up, is that there potentially could be obligations that the MD does not have currently recorded. If you can get those on your books, over time, as that obligation increases, on your liability schedule, you're able to then collect money or fund, fund that cleanup in the future, and able to, to save for it versus having it just appear randomly ten, twenty years down the road and have to, to pull from your current reserve. So I think that's one of the value of, of this handbook section, and that adopting it in twenty twenty-three. There's also other comments in here, just in relation to contaminated sites versus asset retirement obligations, so you might come across some of those while, while looking for any asset retirement obligations. But with that said, that's kind of the, the end of my report there, and if anybody has any questions, I can definitely take them on that.
Yeah, Counselor Fredeb.
So in regards to page twenty-six, exactly what you were talking about now, so it's kind of, so it's kind of aligned, so the apply PS thirty-two, that's the liabilities that aren't currently covered, and those are the ones that you recommend seeing in the future, or is that something different?
It's, well, it's ones that you currently don't have recorded. So, so thirty-two sixty is in relation to if you have an asset that does have a legal obligation to be, you know, remediated or cleaned up, that you have to incur those costs on the books. So if you have a building, for example, say the building's two million dollars, and if you, you think that, you know there's asbestos in the building, say the asbestos to clean up is half a million dollars, you would then book a half a million dollar liability, as well as you would have an increase to the value or the cost base of the, the building itself of half a million. So you wouldn't see a direct hit on your operations to start, you, your tangible capital assets were increased, and your liabilities would increase. And then over time, say in twenty years, you plan on remediating the building, that half a million dollars will adjust for inflation over that time, and as well as be amortized into your operations. So, so then you'll have a cost that hits your, your bottom line, and then within your annual surplus, you'll hopefully have sufficient funds generated to meet that obligation in the future. So it kind of sets it up where it says, as of right now, this is the cost, and then you expect to do it later, and then allows you to save over time through your oper, operating budget, so that at the end of it, you have the money to, to do the retirement. Hope that kind of makes sense.
Yeah, so one more question regarding that, so is our, would bulldogs be looked into that in the future? Because I mean, like, if we're pulling one out, there is anchors that are put in, you know, what kind of remediation is going to be involved in ten, twenty years, what kind of laws are going to change? I guess we don't know, or this is just specifically buildings only?
No, no, it'd be based on anything that would have a current legal obligation. So the building one is just kind of an easier one to look at, but there could be fuel, fuel tanks, potentially, if you have fuel tanks in the, in the ground, there could be a requirement to, to those as well. Stuff in your railroad tracks, there, honestly, there's, there could be a bigger, bigger list. Right now, I'm starting to open up discussions between ourselves, other clients, as to what people are, are finding, and then I'm hoping to have discussion groups in relation to other municipalities to try to figure out what, what other people are seeing, or what, what, what they're finding in relation to that, and some of these asset retirement obligations. So that's why I'm encouraging clients to go through their asset list, to see if there's anything that potentially could meet the definition of that. But yeah, it could be, could be a wide range of items, it could be just a couple, but definitely looking for work to be performed in this area, as opposed to just saying we don't have any, so.
Awesome, thanks, Jeff.
Yes, go ahead, Deputy Reeve Swager.
Jeff, just a kind of question, how we're doing compared to other municipalities similar size, maybe with respect to unrestricted surplus? Is that something you kind of?
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to, I'm just trying to think, yeah, I mean, other counties that I've been auditing, I mean, there's, there's definitely been, been a surplus at year end there. I think, I think there was kind of seeing less capital work done than maybe was initially wanted to be done, maybe, maybe last summer, in relation to that, like kind of under budget in relation to what was budgeted for to be spent on, on capital projects, so it's kind of leaving some surpluses behind and more transfers into reserves. So I've definitely seen that at, at other counties in the year, as well as, as yours. So hopefully, it's a better summer this year and nicer weather, but yeah, it's definitely been, been pretty common, so I have seen other municipalities with the same, same increase there.
So we're doing okay?
Yeah. Yeah, in relation to, yeah, so I mean, in relation to, to financial health, you definitely have, you know, sufficient financial assets there, so, yeah.
Nice job.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem, thanks for, thanks for having me, appreciate coming out and seeing everybody, so, thanks.
I think we're going to take like a five-minute break, or I need a motion first, though.
And, and Mr. Reeve, just to, just to offer counsel the opportunity, if there was something in particular the counsel wanted to speak in.
Oh, yeah, if you want to go on camera.
In confidence.
Yes.
To the, to the auditors, this would be the opportunity to have that conversation now.
Okay, well, I need a motion before we break.
Motion to accept?
Yes.
I'll make the motion. Good job, Jeff.
Okay, Deputy Reeve Swager makes the motion that counsel approves the consolation financial statement for the Municipal District of Bonneville for the year ending two thousand twenty-one, and furthermore, that counsel approves the two thousand twenty-one audit findings report as presented, and furthermore, that counsel approves the two thousand twenty-one financial statement report as presented. Any discussion on that, gentlemen? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you once again.
Thank you.
And now we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, welcome back, I believe we're going to go to seven point two one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of counsel. Seven point two point one is the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority twenty twenty-two fire apparatus purchase request. The Bonneville Regional Fire Authority has submitted a request for the procurement of five additional fire apparatuses scheduled for replacement between twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, under their proposed fifteen-year interval as follows. Pumper, number one is a two thousand pumper, two thousand and seven pumper number twenty, two thousand and seven pumper ninety-one, two thousand and seven tanker twenty-one, two thousand and ten tanker thirty-one, two thousand and tanker forty-one. Ordering multiple units in the same order can result in a one to a two percent savings, and ordering identical units within the same order can result in a two to three percent savings per unit. Ordering all five apparatuses at the same time, with deliveries in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four can maximize savings by minimizing the annual inflation cost and locking in the estimated price of the chassis at the twenty twenty-two figures as follows. The two thousand and seven pumper number twenty at six hundred and eighty-nine thousand and sixty-two dollars, the two thousand pumper number ninety-one, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand sixty-two dollars, two thousand and seven tanker number twenty-one, five hundred and two thousand thirty-one, two thousand and ten tanker number thirty-one, five thou, five hundred and two thousand and thirty-one dollars, and two thousand and nine tanker number forty-one, five hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one, for a total of two point nine three four million dollars. The BRFA maintains that a fifteen-year replacement cycle for trucks is prudent based on two pump failures in twenty twenty-one, one on an MD truck and a second in town in Bonneville truck, both of the age of fourteen years. While these failures were identified during a test, they could have occurred during a deployment, and could have cost as much as sixty thousand dollars to repair. On February tenth, twenty twenty-one, after assessment conducted by Bear Integrated Solutions, counsel passed a motion confirming that a hard fifteen-year interval was not supported and left administration with an option to extend a vehicle's retirement period beyond fifteen years. We have attached for counsel's information, the motion of fifteen verse twenty-year replacement, and appendix B is the MD's and BFRA replacement schedule. The purchase of trucks and apparatus in their intervals are not governed by legislation, testing and compliance of equipment is based on recommendation and standards set by the National Fire Protection Association and the Underwriters Laboratory of Canada. The MD did not budget for an ask of five fire units during the twenty twenty-two budget deliberation process. The equipment replacement program currently has funding in place for only one unit, being pumper number twenty, which is in Goodrich, which is due for replacement in twenty twenty-two at an estimated cost of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand and sixty-two dollars. As BRFA trucks are decommissioned, the BRFA typically arranges for their disposal, and the MD then receives the proceeds of sale. An estimated return on the decommissioned unit should land between forty to sixty thousand dollars, will not be realized until after the delivery of a replacement truck and subsequent sale of the old unit. Our recommended action is that counsel approves issuing a tender for the replacement of unit eighty-two seventy at the Goodrich Fire Hall as approved in the Municipal District of Bonneville's twenty twenty-two budget. You can see appendix A, what, what I would suggest to counsel is, I wasn't here in March, but this motion the counsel passed left administration kind of hanging. This was a, a motion to continue with the fifteen-year replacement life cycle for apparatus, and it was defeated, and you can see the results of the vote. However, it did not provide administration with any other direction as to what would be the, the appropriate life cycle. Is it ten years, is it twenty years, is it twenty-five years, is it five years? It just, it just said, and then directed administration, continue with the purchase of two new fire apparatus. I know there had been some discussion about twenty years, but in, in our research of counsel motions, we could not find anything specific directing administration to maintain a hard twenty-year replacement on vehicles. You can see appendix B, which talks a little bit more in-depth on, on the trucks, and so that's our recommendation. Fire Chief Heaney is here to answer any questions, should, should counsel wish to have Fire Chief Heaney speak.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak on the motion itself, because as I remember it, it was to say that a hard line on fifteen years was not really a practical way of doing it when one truck might only be used every month, and one truck might be used every day over the fifteen-year life cycle, so I wanted it based more on usage, engine hours, things like that, right? Not as opposed to, okay, fifteen years, you're done, because we were selling these trucks to other municipalities who were, end up using them for another ten years, right? So that's where the problem lied in, and so I thought that there was something that was eventually coming back, and I guess it was left with Jay or whoever, and to say, okay, this is how we're going to follow this. Once it reaches a certain amount of hours or usage, then we're going to look at the replacing it, right? So that was kind of the whole thought process behind that one, for sure, so.
Any other discussion, right? Okay, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. If you go beyond, beyond fifteen years, there's always the cost of repairs, which we had one unit, one pumper, I think, the cost was forty to fifty thousand dollars, and then the value of the apparatus decreases as well, plus you're paying more for a new apparatus if you wait an extra year, so that's why I supported going to fifteen years. The other discussion, it was not twenty, it was up to twenty, but not twenty, so that's my comment for now.
I just got it, we never found any other motion that says anything, like it, it was left kind of vague here.
Through the Reeve, to the Reeve and, and the counsel, the, the motion as indicated in the counsel package, appendix A, is the only thing we could find, then that's the motion was the counsel directs administration to continue using the existing fifteen-year replacement life cycle for fire apparatus equipment. Uh, then that's the motion was the council directs administration to continue using the existing fifteen year replacement life cycle for fire apparatus equipment. And that motion was defeated. The motion um immediately following that was the council direct administration received with the purchase of two new fire apparatus units as directed. There was never any further um, uh, motions made since March of last year regarding this at all.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, so there was no direction to go up to twenty years, just fifteen as, as status quo, correct?
Uh, through the, uh, to the Reeve, uh, to Counselor Kreviak, the motion was to continue using the fifteen year uh life cycle. That was defeated. It, it, it left administration with no real direction. Um, it could mean to, we would use a ten year cycle. It could mean we could use a twenty. We only know about the twenty years because we've been able to watch, I've been able to watch, as I was not here in March of, of twenty twenty-one, the YouTube uh video on the council discussion where twenty years was kind of where council was heading to. But just by reading this motion, if without the context of any of the, uh, uh, of having watched that, this motion has, it, it's left administration in terms of what is the timeframe. Uh, I would have, I would encourage council in the future with motions like these. We need some direction from council as to what would be then the replacement cycle on these vehicles if it's not fifteen years. And, and I suggest not just on um fire apparatus, but what is? If council today wants to go to twenty years, well, that would be a discussion. Or if council wants to go up to twenty years, or council wants to go back, or council wants to have, as Counselor Scarsen indicated, some other metric by which we would evaluate fire apparatus, engine hours, kilometers, usage, where the, the vehicle is located. Uh, those are all things we could, we could do, but we, uh, we just would require that, that direction. The up to twenty years conversation, um, it might have happened, but it's not indicated in any motion of council.
Sorry, Counselor Scarsen and Counselor Kreviak, did I miss you? Sorry.
No. Yeah, I think that honestly, you need to throw the, the years out the window. You're not, you, you say you're losing value, but it, I mean, it says right here, you're gonna get forty to sixty thousand dollars for these units as is right now after fifteen years, right? So um, there has to be a matrix because I'm telling you, like, I work in an industry that works with pumpers all the time and it's, I mean, some of these things are thirty or forty years old that are being used, right? So and they're used every single day, all day long. So I mean, it's um, I can't be convinced that after fifteen years of, of occasional use that a machine is not worth anything or, or not able to be used anymore. That's all the point is.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I just wanted to ask Chief Heaney, how much money are we saving by ordering all five units at one time?
Mr. Reeve, if I could just ask council for, for Chief Heaney to speak, if we could just have resolution of council to allow Chief Heaney to speak under our procedure by law.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Mike's motion? Seeing none, all is a favor? Carrie, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, through, uh, through the chair to Counselor Kreviak. Would be, any numbers that I give you today are, are estimated numbers on savings in talking with the manufacturers, right? They will tell you about multiple truck orders. They'll tell you about ordering trucks that are identical to each other. Each of those things brings you savings. The estimation is that we should be able to save anywhere from two to three percent per truck based on this multiple truck.
Deputy Reeve Swager?
Yeah, just a, a couple of points, I guess. The, the regional fire authority has recommended that we, that they'd like to replace these trucks over a period of a few years and, and buy, of course, buy five trucks at, at one time, as they've been doing for years. Um, and like I can understand Counselor Scarsen's comments, but these are lifesaving vehicles that you, you, you know, you might be able to run it for a lot longer, but you may not. And there's all kinds of implications of, of a truck not starting because you've got a truck that's just kind of needs that maintenance and you, and it's, it's broken down or whatever. So like, I'm not willing to kind of risk people's lives by just saying that we'll run these trucks forever and I mean, you're not saying ever anyway, but you're saying longer than the thirty or the twenty or fifteen years. But like a study was done, the, the study, we paid like, I think twenty-five or thirty thousand to have a study and, and uh, the study recommended fifteen years and the city of Coal Lake recommends fifteen years. That's what they've been using forever also. So I, I'm just, I'd, I'd hate to see, um, you know, these trucks breaking down and if, there's insurance implications too. And I don't, people who don't have insurance or have a fire hall or fire trucks close to them pay a ton more. So if we start just kind of messing around with, with uh, the purchase of, of trucks and extending them to twenty years or more, I think there's implications that we don't know about. So I, I, I'm not willing to, you know, play with that.
Yeah, Counselor Fedev.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is putting any lives in danger here. And the, and the implication of even suggesting that is totally unwarranted. Uh, the study was done and it said that the BRFA had excellent maintenance. They did excellent job on it. So uh, urban, there were, you know, the recommended action is fifteen years. Rural, they, like they're saying twenty years. Uh, all we're, all we're suggesting is that vehicle has X, very low mileage on it. And the only failures we're talking about here is not the starting of the vehicle, it's the pump failure. Uh, in, in the notes here saying, it also says that uh, they didn't know that this pump failed only when it went into testing that it failed. So the numbers instead of, uh, excuse me, I'm not gonna ask any question. So what is the failure rate? That X amount of gallons, what, at what point does it fail? So, uh, so yeah, just gonna, so the unit itself didn't completely crap out, right? It was, instead of flowing X amount, it flowed a little bit less below the recommended rate, correct?
Right, so the two standards set, one by the National Fire Protection Association, which is not legislation, you're not bound by it. It is, we consider it our best practice. The second one, which carries a little more stroke to it, is the Underwriters Laboratory of Canada. So the NFPA standard is a little higher, the, the ULC one is a little lower. Uh, so uh, in, in the RFD where it talks about the two apparatus that failed both at the same age. Um, so the uh, uh, station five, pump fifty-one, which is an MD owned apparatus, that one failed both standards. So yes, the pump was still running. However, it failed to a point that it did not, it no longer met the ULC standard, which in a best practice, you would pull it out of service until you can get repairs where it can meet that minimum level standard. The town truck that failed at the same time failed the NFPA standard, did not fail the ULC standard. Therefore, we were able to leave it as a secondary apparatus, right? Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Right, so.
So it wasn't a catastrophic, it didn't blow up.
Right.
The pump didn't fall out of it, but it did not meet the standards that were set for its ability to maintain pressure and maintain volume.
Correct. So yeah, so the suggestion of the vehicle is not able to start, not, you know, like that kind of, kind of discredits what you guys do. You guys do an excellent job of, of maintaining your vehicles and growing your parts of it. And you know, and that's thanks to your volunteers and thanks to your, your stringent, uh, sorry, your stringent, I guess, maintenance records that you guys have. So you guys do an excellent job of that. So that's not the question, is, this is about pump failure.
Right.
Correct.
The, when you take a look at, uh, if you take a look at any of our records from the time that we started to do annual pump testing rather than just somewhat random, which, you know, you go back probably twenty years, that they probably weren't being done every year. But since we've been doing them, um, I was able, prior to that pump failure happening, I brought to the board in anticipation that that pump was likely going to fail its test or worse, based on watching the metrics of every year, watching the uh, its ability to meet the pump test, dropping and drop, its capacity dropping every year. Where in uh, in twenty, twenty twenty, that truck passed the test by eleven RPM. So it's a, it's a combination of flow rate versus RPM of the truck. It was, it was already at a point of just about being ready to fail. So when you watch that downward curve of its capabilities dropping every year, even if they're not being used a lot, just by virtue of the way those pumps are designed, because very different pumps than the pumps that you're working with. And the fact that using a pump every day is prob, is actually better for it than having a pump sit and then only go screaming out to a call and then pumping really, really hard for a period of time and then getting put back into, uh, into dry dock. That's probably harder on a pump than using it every day.
So um, I get, so listen, I'm not opposed to buying new pumps and our tankers if needed. I would just want to make sure we're exploring every avenue and I would just say, listen, then um, how do we in good conscience and sell these units to other municipalities to use? I mean, if we're worried about them being lifesaving units, how do we say, Glendon here's a truck, give us forty thousand, now you guys use it, right?
So, so those recommendations are based on, uh, the, the major recommendation is the fire underwriter survey. So the fire underwriter survey gives a rating to every community and that's what that community's fire insurance rates are. The premiums are set based on information given by the fire underwriter survey. The fire underwriter survey is actually who has set up this replacement schedule on trucks. With a community the size of the combination of both the town of Bonneville and the MD of Bonneville, they are suggesting that a truck can be in service for up to twenty years. The first fifteen years of that life would be frontline service. The second life would be as a secondary unit, meaning it wouldn't be first truck out the door. It becomes more of a glorified taxi at that point. And it can serve for five more years without affecting your insurance rates, right? So at fifteen years, when we sell them, there's still five years of life left in that truck for smaller communities than us to use it without affecting their local rating from the fire underwriter survey. That's why we chose fifteen years to sell them. There's still five years left. That's, that's why we can get forty to sixty thousand dollars. If you wait till twenty years, some communities may still buy them and say, you know what? We're not paying attention to the fire underwriter survey. They may still buy them and use them, but they're buying them for five or six thousand dollars now instead of forty to sixty thousand dollars.
Just a follow-up, sorry. Just, so then if, um, I guess, and this is another question, and I don't know if it's an option, but you know, we've got these ambulances that are running five hundred thousand kilometers on them. You know, I would say those are pretty lifesaving, you know, units as well. I'm sure that the motors and the chassis on these trucks are fine, like, is a pump replacement ever a possibility?
Uh, pump replacement is a possibility. After fifteen years, the tech, technology has generally changed enough that you're buying a completely new system. You're probably in the realm of a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace a pump on a truck. When you buy a brand new fire truck right now, depending on the kind of chassis you buy, you can spend anywhere from about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars just on the chassis. Then replacing the pump or putting the pump on is about two hundred grand, depending on the size of, of uh, pump you're dealing with. Um, and then beyond that, you're probably adding another hundred thousand dollars worth of storage boxes and stuff behind the pump. So putting a new pump on a truck, you're, you're looking at a significant cost against even the brand new cost of the truck versus what you're ever gonna get for used value. Uh, just the repairs that we did on pump fifty-one uh, in, in twenty twenty-one, uh, were originally estimated uh, by Rocky Mountain Phoenix at about sixty thousand dollars. They came in significantly cheaper than that. We were very happy to see that because the damage wasn't as extensive as they originally thought it was. You know, it came in at just under thirty thousand dollars. But when you look at the resale value of that truck at fifteen years being, you know, forty to sixty thousand dollars-ish, that thirty thousand dollars eats into that pretty quickly, right? Now there's not a lot of residual value left in that truck, even if you sell it for full boat uh, um, retail price for a truck of that age.
Counselor Fedev?
Uh, yeah, so you, so you kind of mentioned the insurance rates would go down. What insurance rate and whose insurance?
Sorry, the, not so much that it would go down. So the fire underwriter survey gives each community a rating.
Okay.
And then that rating is used by the insurance companies to set the premiums.
So for Joe consumer?
For Joe consumer, yeah.
Correct. So if I live in a place, uh, if I live X amount of kilometers away, then my rates will be this much based on the equipment that could respond to my place.
Correct.
Okay.
So then when you get a truck that ages out beyond what's written into that fire underwriter survey, that decreases your rating, which then in turn increases the insurance rates for, for Joe consumer.
So that's why uh, Cherry Grove area is paying so much on their insurance.
Because of their distance from a fire hall.
Right.
Correct. I mean, ultimately, in a, a fire department is just another form of insurance. You either pay for it upfront or you pay for it behind when you're, when you're paying on insurance. Um, and, and I apologize, uh, Counselor Scarsen, I, I, I missed a piece, uh, answering your question earlier on ambulances. The, the major difference on the ambulances is that the amortization rate of our ambulances is dictated by our contract with AHS. So they only provide X amount of dollars a year. Right now, we're working on a seven year amortization process with them, written into the contract. So when you're uh, Metro Edmonton, what they call technical paramedicals, so the, the ambulances that are running in Edmonton, a seven year amortization rate for them means their ambulances are being replaced at about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and eighty thousand kilometers. Here, with as many transfers as we do to the city, about two hundred and fifty thousand a year, split between our three ambulances. A seven year amortization rate means that we're running about five hundred thousand kilometers before we get to replace an ambulance. But that's specifically dictated by the contract and that's a piece that we continue to push back on AHS with. Not where we want our ambulances to be. We would much rather be replacing them a heck of a lot faster than that.
Oh, I, I agree a hundred percent. And uh, so I'm just curious on, so this pumper twenty at Goodrich, how many kilometers is on that truck?
Uh, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head on, on what the uh, uh, exactly what the kilometers are. I, I could get it for you fairly quickly, but I, I don't have it with me right now.
But Mr. Reeve to Counselor Scarsen, you can't go by how many clicks a vehicle has, it's go by how many hours the pumps and.
Well, I mean, Counselor Swager said that it might not start, right? So I'm guessing that a unit that has fifty thousand K on it better be starting still, right?
We're rarely running into significant chassis failures. It's when you get close to that fifteen year mark that you start to run into uh, three major failures. There's either electrical issues, there's pump issues, or there's uh, issues around the technology of the day when that truck was built. So particularly now, when you, when you see how much computer usage there is uh, in trucks. You know, I, I'll, I'll give you a good example. Uh, one of the trucks that's located in station nine, that's our contract station uh, with Coal Lake. It was a two thousand and eight uh, Mercedes chassis, or it had a Mercedes engine in it. Uh, it was a Freightliner chassis. Through the process of getting repaired, mechanics accidentally uh, flashed the engine control unit, the ECM, flashed it back to default um, manufacturer's specifications. Which in those default specifications, uh, that truck, if it's, if the park brake is put on, the engine can't go above eleven hundred RPM, which is completely counter to what, how fire trucks operate. So they couldn't make any pressure with their pump. Finding the uh, ability to reflash that ECM to get it back to the fire spec, which would allow it with the park brake on to be able to accelerate, bring the engine speed up so that you can make pressure and push the water around. That took a couple of weeks to find someone who had the ability to do it. Uh, and if we would have had to replace that ECM, uh, we were, we were somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to ten weeks just to try to find a part if we could because of the age of the truck.
Uh, Deputy Reeve Swager?
Yeah, Counselor Scarsen, your comment about truck not starting, I, I lived through that though. I've been on the Ardmore department like for forty years and, and so I, I, you know, was on departments before we had, uh, you know, good, good kind of buyback periods and that sort of thing. So we did have trucks that wouldn't start and you'd, you'd get it started, roll across highway, die again. So I mean, we're way past that now, but because we've had, we've been working with these fifteen year buybacks for, for years and, and, you know, I, we haven't had any problems, so. I, we haven't had any problems, so I, like, I just, the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority has made that recommendation that they'd like to buy those five trucks on, on that same buyback period. So, I'm just gonna make the motion, uh, number two there, council options. Their council approves the request for the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority to issue a tender for the replacement of five fire apparatuses over the next three years as presented. And so, there was a discussion about budgeting for twenty twenty-two, but they're not looking for that till twenty twenty-three anyway, so. I think that's an issue, that's the motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, for, for further discussion, uh, a lot of these are even, like, they're recommended to be replaced in twenty twenty-four. So moving these up, we're not, we're not even maintaining the guidelines of fifteen years. And, and, you know, I'm not saying these things need to get replaced and what, I mean, we know the stuff needs to get replaced, but where's the money gonna come from? I mean, are we gonna increase our taxes by ten percent just for the, you know, for these expenditures? I mean, I, I, I'm telling you, it's, it, this is, uh, uh, there's a reason why it's in the budget for this one and there's a reason that, that, that's in place. And next year, there's another one's gonna come in, the year after, there's another one to come in. One of the other concerns that I have is we're gonna buy five and the next thing you know, within the next fifteen years, those five are gonna come into term again and then every six months after that, depending on how, uh, what kind of issues they have at the factory are gonna come in at different times, we're gonna be spending another four or five million again. So, again, as far as, uh, uh, like, as a business owner, I don't like when things come up all at once because I know there's, there's a lot of money going out. This way, if it's staggered, it works out well, so.
Mr. Reeve.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, in two thousand twenty-four, that apparatus will be fifteen years old. We do not have to pay for all of these five trucks this year, like, two thousand twenty-three, and the other one will be two thousand twenty-four. It's not all being paid for by this year, Counselor, uh, Fedev.
I, I, so, yeah. One sec, Dan. I had a question. If we're to buy, do, do we need all the money in the budget right now, if we're to buy all five trucks right now?
Uh, through the Reeve to all of council, that's an interesting question, um, and I completely agree with Counsel Kreviak, they don't need to be paid for today. But I, it, it would, it would be my recommendation that that council be, that that money be set aside by council in a reserve. Otherwise, you could end up with a, a, a decision of a future council or this council next year wanting to do something different and without that money being earmarked specifically for this purchase. We're, we're going out to tender on five trucks. The, uh, the, the winner of the tender would expect that that money is set aside. Um, and, uh, by not setting that money aside, we do run the risk of, of a future council decision impacting this decision and then we're in a scramble for the money. I, I'm not even sure where the two-point-nine comes from today, I would have to leave that to our finance department, but it's not in our equipment capital replacement fund today for this. But I, I would think that if you're going to do a tender, that you're, um, and we're gonna go out for five trucks, it would be my recommendation that that money get earmarked and set aside.
Right now.
I, 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 that, yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Did anyone do the math of what, like you said, there's two, two to three percent, what kind of savings is that over, like, yeah, Counselor Fedev?
Yeah, I mean, there's discussion, like, there's a motion on table.
Yep.
So the discussion should be between council, should not?
Yeah, well, I was gonna make that motion, but you wanted to speak, right? So, and then it went from you to. Yeah, I know, but then you wanted to speak before I was gonna say the motion, so then the discussion started, so. Go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Reeve, isn't there money, Mr. Heaney, that we put in the capital replacement program every year? So that by the end of fifteen years, there is money to support that apparatus?
That's, that's my understanding is that each apparatus that has a tangible capital asset is identified on the, on the day that it's purchased with a purchase price and then an identified replacement value price, um, on its expected replacement date.
Yeah, so, uh, through council or through the Reeve to council regarding cap, uh, capital equipment, we never budget through the equipment capital replacement plan for exactly the amount. We don't know what a vehicle's gonna be worth in fifteen years. We take a vehicle that is, say, ten years old, when we purchased it ten years ago, we know we paid for it. We then put aside enough money to replace that vehicle at what we think it might be. For example, in all, all five of these vehicles, we're, we're short in the equipment replacement fund for each one of these vehicles. There is not enough been put aside, particularly, um, um, because we're ordering some of these three years early, but there's still money to go into the equipment replacement fund. Uh, so, we don't ever have quite enough in the fund because we don't ever know what the replacement of that is. It's a general replacement fund where most of, but I think on these vehicles, if memory serves me correct, we're, uh, we're probably at the three hundred and fifty, maybe as high as four hundred thousand dollar mark on each of these. So, although it's in the equipment replacement fund, it will also require funds to come out of general revenue to cover the difference between what's in the equipment replacement fund and what the actual cost of the truck will be. And then assuming that the truck actually remains at that price post-tender and there's not other changes, we saw that just recently, there can be other changes in, in, in truck pricing. So, there is money in the equipment replacement fund for particular years. This year, it was budgeted for truck twenty. That was, that was what was in the budget for this year, but not for any of the other trucks. Um, and even at that, there would still be a requirement to withdraw some money from a general revenue fund to cover, uh, the complete cost of that, of that truck.
But Mr. Reeve, there has to be some money in the capital replacement program for the other trucks partially, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, well, we have a motion, uh, a, a motion that Counselor, or Deputy Reeve Swegert made, that council approves the request by the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority to issue a tender for the replacement of five fire apparatus over the next three years as presented. Any discussion, go ahead. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Josh.
Uh, through the Reeve, they, uh, these trucks, if, there's probably gonna be an increase in cost in manufacturing them, I would think, over the next few years too, we would wanna factor into the savings, right? If we order them now and, uh, just with, just with inflation alone, right? So, just something to think about.
Yeah, but we don't know, one thing we don't know for sure is that in two years, the trucks are gonna be higher, they could be lower too. But I think we're, we're banking on, I think the BFRA was banking on that the trucks are gonna keep going up. And I think another thing that we're banking on, that it's just, you might not get those trucks 'cause, uh, like, we were discussing the other day that, uh, we can't even buy, it's hard to buy a new truck now. We were trying to replace one of our stars there and we couldn't even find, uh, we couldn't even find one to replace it. We're thinking of buying used, but I don't know where we, where we're at with that right now. But did any, like I asked, did anyone do, what's the savings over, what, what do you project the savings are gonna be here?
Well, it's gonna be about fifteen grand for every five hundred thousand, right? So times that by five. Fifty grand, maybe?
Yes, uh, Mr. Reeve.
But then if you, uh, uh, factor in inflation also, it could be even more than that. So, I think, uh, I agree with, uh, Counselor, uh, Deputy Reeve, uh, Schwegert's motion that the best, uh, deal for the MD is to purchase all five this year. They don't have to be paid for this year, uh, next year and then two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, just the one thing from a procedural perspective regarding the council's decision today on this particular request. I have, um, um, it's, it's still out there in the Ether Motion Twenty-One-One Seventeen, which is a motion of March of last year that was defeated on the fifteen years. I would ask council, give us some clear direction in the future, so when Fire Chief Heaney, um, uh, or, or his, or, uh, more future Fire Chief comes, that we have some direction as to what, uh, because that's created some issue here for us in administration, is if it was a clear fifteen or clear twenty or some other metrics, uh, as Counselor Scarsen has indicated. But regardless of the council's decision today, I still have a motion on the books of council to not use the fifteen-year replacement cycle. So council motion that we'll be making today is actually going against, going against the council motion of March of last year. That's fine, council can make that motion, there's no issue there, but, uh, but I'm just suggesting that this motion will still be on the books. We'll have a motion to buy some trucks today, but this motion will be still on the books for the next time there's a purchase come up and I'd really encourage council to clean this up for administration. So when Chief Heaney comes back to me, I can say, no, council said it's twenty, or council said it's ten years, or council said it's fifteen, but this is going to be a constant, uh, um, this is gonna be a burr in the saddle for a while.
We probably should've had that talk first and a motion made to where we were going and then, then we wouldn't have this kind of discussion. Uh, I'll go with Counsel Kreviak then Counselor Scarsen.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, there is no motion also saying to go up to twenty years as well. So, there should be a discussion, uh, later in the year, so we know for next time, uh, whatever the decision of council is.
Counselor Scarsen, please.
Yeah, so I, I have two questions. So the first one would be, so do you have an inventory list of all of your trucks and when they're due, based on the fifteen years? And secondly, um, do you have a rotation where you can say, now this one here, pumper twenty, we can ship to wherever because it'll be a second, a second unit being sent out, like you said earlier, for the next five years, right? And secondly, is all this money, like, uh, the CEO mentioned, we have to have all this in place before the tender? Like, is it all in the, uh, it's not all there, right, right now? So, I guess, how do you go to tender without having the money allocated for it, right? Chief Heaney?
Um, as far as your question on, do we have plans for, uh, taking a truck and putting into secondary service? There aren't that many hauls that actually have more than one pumper in them. Uh, so, we have not used that as a model in the past because historically, we've been replacing it fifteen years. So that would be, trucks come, we, we order the truck, replace the truck at fifteen years and then the truck that has been replaced is then sold off with the proceeds coming back to the MD. As far as the, as the tenders go, um, I mean, uh, CEO's advice on, on, uh, on allocating reserve funds in advance, um, I, that, that's obviously good, good fin, sound financial strategies. However, the tenders themselves is really, it's a longer version of going for a quote. So ultimately, the decision to go out to tender today does not bind council at any specific price. The, the way the process would be is I would go to tender for these trucks, put the specs out in the tender, receive all the tender packages in, obviously evaluate, make sure that every, uh, every manufacturer that puts in a tender bid is meeting the spec that we've identified for the trucks and then bringing the costs back to, to council. So then you know the exact price of the truck down to the penny. When you, when you pull the trigger on making the order, you know exactly what the price is. These are all based on estimated costs. Going out to tender is really getting your quotes from, from your manufacturers and then when you make a decision to buy, the municipality offers a letter of intent to the manufacturer, which locks in the price on that day. So even if the price of a chassis goes up over the length of time it takes to build, or in this case, where we have, some of these builds aren't even being delivered until twenty twenty-four, you've locked in pricing as of today.
So then, uh, and then also, do you have, or are you able to produce maybe a list of, like, I mean, we'll be having this discussion next year about five more trucks down the road, you know what I mean? So, I'd like to see the rotation of, as to all your trucks in all the years and when they're expected to be renewed, I guess, right?
Yeah, I can, I can definitely provide that, I'll, I'll, uh, send that off to, uh, to, uh, the CEO for, uh, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Al, did you have something?
We're just, uh, I'm through the Reeve to council, we're just looking at, so, to Counselor Scarsen's question, we, we have some similar numbers. I'm not sure if it's exactly in lockstep, uh, with, uh, with Chief Heaney's numbers, but through our equipment replacement program, when a new truck is purchased, it goes into the program and in, uh, um, and as planned. We're just looking up as to whether we're at, whether we're depreciating them at a fifteen-year cycle or a twenty-year cycle, which may be some of the reasons why, um, our, and I'm not sure and, uh, our finance department is just, is just confirming what our depreciation schedule is on trucks, whether it's, uh, whether it's fifteen years or, or twenty, or twenty years. If we're gonna be replacing trucks, if that's gonna be the, the direction of council at fifteen years, then we need to make sure our equipment replacement fund is depreciating those same vehicles at fifteen years. Um, otherwise, there's gonna be a five-year discrepancy.
They're all too good.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. But there's nothing saying that, uh, it should go up to twenty years because no motion was made to that effect.
I would also suggest it, no, the motion that's out there right now gives us no direction whatsoever. Fifteen years, twenty years or ten years, maybe we should be doing it at, at the ten-year interval. That's the problem with the motion that's on the floor, right, or not the motion that's on the floor, but the motion from March of last year, is it, um, is, it says we're not using fifteen years. Period, that's what it said, that was defeated by council. So I'm, I, I'm now, as a CAO and, and, and Chief Heaney is in this position with us as, I, I, I don't know what council wants to do because council did not, council provided, the only direction council provided in, in March of twenty twenty-one was that we weren't going to use fifteen years. That's, whether that's sixteen years or fourteen years, that was the direction council was to not use fifteen years.
Yeah, we have the cart before the horse right now.
Just one last comment.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's prudent to support this, uh, motion and then when we get the exact numbers, uh, we will see what the price of each unit will be.
Thank you, Counselor Fedev.
Yeah, I think, I think we should just approve the one, uh, have a discussion for the other ones. So this way, we're clear about where we're going, if there is gonna be a matrix used in the life of it, uh, and it's gonna be used as secondary or not. But, uh, you know, we, we have been budgeted for one and, and that is, I think we should just slow down a little bit and, you know, have the bigger discussion on this and, you know, like, why rush? There's still two and three years left.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Swegert?
Yeah, like I, I've said before, that we've hired the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority staff to, to look after it. I think they've been doing a great job for years. This, this is nothing new, like, they've been purchasing trucks on this fifteen-year buyback for years and n- n- nothing's really changed. I mean, there was a motion made, yeah, uh, and it, you know, got turned down so that council at the time didn't want the fifteen years, but we, we, I think we should just go back to that, but let, let the regional fire authority do their job. We, we've got money in the budget, we've been, and, and we don't need it this year anyway. It's for next year, so I don't even think it has to come out of this year's budget. But we do, we have been putting money aside for fire trucks, so this isn't something that just came up.
Yeah, we have, uh.
Counselor Fedev.
In the budget, we have room for one for a truck, not five.
Counselor Kreviak?
I think based on what, uh, Chief Heaney is saying, that this is, that, uh, this, it's going out for a tender, which is really like a quote, we should go ahead and approve it and we can have a discussion on whether we wanna go fifteen, twenty years or hours or, or pump hours or, or whatever other options later, but we can approve to at least get the pricing on these trucks for today.
Mr. Reeve, just clarification for council, a tender is not just a quote. A tender, uh, a tender is a contract.
It's a real deal.
It's a real deal. If, if the tender comes in, um, um, uh, at whatever number, um, council has budgeted for that, we are committed to purchase. So it's not just, it's just not as simple as going out and getting quotes. It's actually, it's actually an agreement to purchase, it's, uh, so I just, I just wanna clarify that.
Sorry, I gotta, yeah, go ahead, yeah, you go ahead.
No, okay, I'll, that is, I'm just curious on that and so, is, if it's over budget, you're still committed?
No, so, uh, council sets a budget on certain things. Um, and if the tender process is going to be used as a, as a, as a, some machinery to just go out and get quotes, um, then the tender process itself, so I, I'll explain a little tender law. Um, there are two contracts in a tender. There's contract A and contract B, and these are actually legal terminology. Contract A, when I put a tender out, I'm saying to those people who are going to bid on it that we will purchase from you if the pricing is in line with what we had anticipated it to be. Then ten, then contract B kicks in after the tenders, where I now am, where I now need to sign an actual contract for the supply to someone who's taken the time and the effort to provide me something on contract A. So a tender is not, um, if you wanted to, uh, and, and of course, because we're forced by the Northwest Trade Alliance to actually, uh, to actually tender any purchases over seventy-five thousand dollars of goods and equipment, um, we're, we're forced into that tender. But, but tender law is very clear, if we were just to go out, let, let's say the trucks came in at two-point-seven million, two-hundred thousand, under the two-point-nine-three-five that, um, that Chief Heaney is, uh, is proposing. Um, and then we decided to cancel it, we better have a very good reason for canceling it. Um, an exceptionally good reason because we now put ourselves in a position where we've breached contract A, where we've said to providers, if you bid on this and if you are the compliant bid and the low-compliant bid, we will purchase from you. That's contract A. Contract B is when we actually get into stroke and a pen and you're gonna provide to us at such and such a date and that's the delivery, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that is the, uh, we had this conversation only several weeks ago regarding tractors. When you have a compliant bid, if that bid is compliant and under what we've indicated through our procedure, which would be a budget, we don't have a lot of choice. You can cancel the tender, absolutely, um, but there are risks attached to canceling tenders. It's not the same as just picking up the phone and saying, hey, what can I buy five fire trucks for? Can you give me a quote? That's a different, this is, uh, tender, tender law is, is very, uh, is very specific and there are, uh, there are, um, there are very specific risks to not following through on a tender. If you're over budget. If you're over budget, that's, that's an easy one, that's why it's an easy one to get out of a tender when you're over budget. So listen, it, it came in more than what we had budgeted for. And that's why we come back to council with a request either to cancel the tender or to top off or to change the, uh, to change the actual, uh, thing that we're, that we're bidding, that we're asking people to bid on.
So then, sorry, where did this two, so the two point nine, that, like, you just did some research to find out what does it cost?
That came from Chief Heaney and Chief Heaney's people.
Yeah.
I, I apologize, sorry, what?
The two, like, the cost of all the trucks, you just, how, how did you come up with those then? Like, is that just?
Based on the, the last, um, capital replacement program document, uh, that I had, uh, which was dated in twenty twenty, I don't have anything newer than that. Uh, taking a look at what the anticipated replacement costs were, right? And then for each year after, um, after seeing them added five percent to, to get to our estimated cost.
All right.
I just had a, just a kind of a, probably not a, a question. Um, so if we ordered all these trucks whenever tomorrow, what if they all ca-? Like, are they going to come in in sequence or what if they all came in in eight months from now?
They'll deliver them based on our request. So the spec would be designed for identifying the two trucks for delivery in twenty twenty-three to be delivered in twenty twenty-three. And the three trucks that we're suggesting for delivery in twenty twenty-four, they would be delivered in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, yes.
Uh, one other piece of information through the reef, the rest of council is the finance department just pulled the numbers for me. So currently, in the capital equipment replacement budget for our fire trucks, current money is available, no. I say that, uh, I say that, uh, with the air quotes, that council can do anything that council would like to do. But the current money allocated for, um, for fire trucks, um, for the M D currently just a touch over one point three million dollars. So to approve a tender today of two point nine million dollars, we are, um, I'm, I'm technically short one point six million dollars and change.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
We'll start with Counselor Fedev, then Counselor Crick and then Counselor Cravie.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, uh, I have a lot of faith in B R F, they, they, you know, they have done an excellent job in maintaining these, uh, I don't want to call them fire, apparatuses, there you go. And if I didn't have the confidence in them, I wouldn't be trying to beat this one to death as far as two thousand, sorry, being fifteen years, you know, they're, you know, they have proven themselves that we can, you know, what you call stretch it out by another year or two. And I, uh, yeah, that's, that's all. Last comment.
Promise. Last, last one?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't promise that, you might come back. Counselor Crick?
Uh, through the reef, to the C E O, how much money do we put in, into the fire truck reserve every year?
We'll go to, I don't think Al heard that, we'll repeat that, sorry, he's got a question.
How much money do we put into their fire truck reserve every year?
Um,
We're gonna find that out, yeah, and we're gonna go to Counselor Cravie while we wait for that information.
Yeah, you said we're short of money, absolutely, but, uh, there's more money going to be put into the reserve for the replacement program in two thousand twenty-three and then in two thousand twenty-four for the other fire apparatus.
Yeah, Counselor Carson, while we wait.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I don't want to say confused, but I'm just curious. So if you're saying though that if you, if you ever get these tenders, you would get the trucks over the next couple of years, right? Like, you're saying you had one order for twenty-three and one order for twenty-four or whatever. I guess I'm wondering when would a payment be expected? I'm, the only thing I'm worried about is,
On delivery.
Is it, so it's on delivery, so you could budget for next year's budget cycle to pay for a truck that you're tendering this year?
Yeah, by, by, by ten, the, the ultimate, uh, reason for even bringing this request forward is, historically, we've seen the pricing of fire trucks increase anywhere from five to six percent a year over probably the last ten to fifteen years. Twenty twenty-one saw an increase, uh, depending on the manufacturers, depending on where they get all their parts and pieces, of anywhere from ten to fifteen percent. I'm anticipating that with the supply issues out there right now, uh, where, uh, no different than your pickup trucks, where the manufacturers have trucks sitting waiting for parts that, that, like, they can't put them up for sale. Um, by ordering today, we can help minimize that other ten to twelve percent that I'm anticipating we're going to see just based over this year. By getting the order in today.
Whenever you can.
Metaphorically.
Could they hold the price for two years?
Yeah.
Yeah?
The, uh, one example, uh, Fort Gary, uh, just delivered an aerial truck. And I can't, I'm struggling to remember, uh, which city it was, I, I believe it may have been St. Albert, but I, I can get you that. Over the lifespan or over the, the build time, which for an aerial truck right now is about eighteen months, Fort Gary ended up losing a quarter million dollars on that sale because the prices increased through the time of the build. Ultimately, this, this ask is to leverage the way manufacturers build trucks, um, using that ability to, to, uh, buy multiple components at the same time. So when you take a look at the three tankers that are listed as well, there's a town of Bonneville tanker that's due in twenty twenty-four. Added to this, now you have four tankers that you're ordering at the same time. Even though two of them are single axle and two of them are tandem axle, they're both coming with the exact same pump. So now the manufacturer orders four of the exact same pump. They get a savings when they're, when they're ordering. And ultimately, the trickle-down savings on each and every component, when you make a multiple truck buy is what adds up to potentially your, and again, I think I'm, I think I'm estimating actually fairly low at two to three percent per truck. But that's what creates your trickle-down savings. You save on, on the chassis because they're ordering multiple chassis at the same time. You save on the pumps because they're ordering the pumps at the same time. Uh, and then all the other components that they buy and not build in-house, they're saving on because they're ordering multiples of.
Yeah?
Last comment.
I heard that one before.
Yeah, that wasn't for me. If it takes, uh, eighteen months or perhaps even more, uh, these three pumpers may not come in two thousand twenty-three. There's a chance they may come in two thousand twenty-four, would that be correct? Through the reef, thank you.
Through the reef to Counselor Cravie, the, um, prior to COVID really started to slow things down, the average build time across the industry for a pumper truck was four hundred days. We're looking a lot closer to five hundred days right now. Pumpers are less complicated than an aerial, so an aerial apparatus is quite a bit more complicated. Tankers, um, much less time to build, again, less complicated, fewer parts and pieces, less moving parts involved in a tanker than there is in a pumper. Uh, but ultimately, uh, just for context, I can't give you an exact, uh, delivery date, but we were looking at a four hundred-day build time and that's averaged out across all of the manufacturers prior to COVID kicking in. With the delays in supply chain, um, Towne of Bonneville just took possession of a new truck. Uh, that truck, I was supposed to go do a final inspection on it, uh, in August of last year. I didn't get a chance to go do a final inspection on it until December because they were waiting on a single, uh, electrical harness that they were waiting, it was somewhere inbound from overseas that they, they just did, there was none in stock across North America.
Counselor Fedev? You can speak again.
So, uh, so these are custom order, uh, trucks. So is there any trucks that are available as pumper trucks that are available, like, now that you can buy from the fleet?
Thank you for asking that question because that's, that has been of great discussion in the past. Every manufacturer has a program that they will call a stock program, and you'll notice I threw the air quotes. The stock program is generally, they will wait for a big buy like this one. And then the manufacturer will take advantage of this buy, they'll leverage it. So they'll take a look at this and say, oh, we're building four tankers. Um, then they'll probably put in their plans for their build year to build another three or four tankers that they will put in their stock program. And they're what you would call a cookie cutter truck. So there's, there's no specifications, it is just, this is what we're putting together, they, they have a spec for it. Um, when you look at custom orders, there, there are, if you were to roll up on a fire truck manufacturer's site, you will probably see a bunch of trucks parked around the, uh, around the yard. Uh, there will be a whole bunch that are used that were, uh, that municipalities use as trade-ins. And then there'll be a whole bunch that are in, uh, different states of the build. But it's not like buying a, a pickup truck where you can just walk in and there's something there. Uh, when you go to a trade show, you walk into a trade show, uh, at a fire chiefs conference and firefighters get all crazy because there's lots of chrome and old, brand-new shiny trucks. Uh, well, those trucks, those are called demo units. So they'll build usually one or two or three of their most popular units every year to put out on the trade show circuit because that's where they release their new technologies. So, um, they'll, they'll build a truck and then it drives to every trade show from Halifax through Vancouver and then probably dipping into the northern states if it's a in Canada build. If it's a, if it's a U S build, then they're, they're probably a little more split than that. There would be one, one demo for central U S, one for eastern, one for western. And then those demos, then they will sell at a discount because it's got a whole bunch of kilometers on the chassis, but basically no hours on the pump. Um, the problem with buying a demo truck is you're buying a truck that's already built. Um, so it'd be no different than if you decided you wanted a, a half-ton pickup and the salesman said, but we've got this crazy sale on F four fifties with flatbeds. Um, you could, we could probably sell you one even cheaper than your pickup truck, than your, uh, your half-ton that you were looking for. Okay, that's great, you can get it cheaper, but does it meet your need? I mean, it's ultimately not what you were looking for in the, when we look to spec a truck, it's less about making it super fancy custom. It's about making sure that the truck meets the needs of the department that it's going to, meets the needs of the type of fires that it's going to. So we, we have a different spec for a truck for the Towne of Bonneville than we do for an M D pumper. Two very different designs, um, because ultimately, uh, they're being used in different ways. One truck is going to be connected to a hydrant ninety-plus percent of the time that it ever operates versus a rural truck is probably pulling out of a pond or pulling out of a porta tank. So we spec them differently. And then we try to maintain that spec so that every station that has a pumper, they know where to look for the, we're looking at the interoperability piece, so it's not just the Ardmore Fire Department's truck and then the Lakori Fire Department's truck. When the two, when those two stations respond together on the same fire, they know where the equipment is when, when they are now assigned to work with a different department. They know where the cabinets are, they know where the equipment's going to be stored. So we try to keep things as consistent as possible. Um, not to mention that, uh, we also try to make sure that the things that we spec, particularly for the M D, are trucks that the M D shop are familiar with. So they're trucks that they see on a regular basis, they know how to fix them, they've got, uh, parts in-house to fix the common problems that you would see with that truck. You know, you, you take a look at the last truck ordered by, uh, the city of Cold Lake, came in about a week after the new Towne of Bonneville truck. Two trucks designed to do the same thing. The Cold Lake truck, there's nothing it can do that the Towne of Bonneville truck can't do. The city of Cold Lake truck came in at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the Towne of Bonneville truck came in at five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Ordered a different chassis, saved about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars on ordering a commercial chassis versus a custom chassis. And then everything back of the chassis is basically the same, same boxes, same pump, same capabilities. But ultimately, when we order a spec, we're ordering a spec based on, let's buy the fanciest thing that we have out there. We're ordering a spec based on, this is what we know the capabilities of our firefighters are, this is the intent of that hall. We have rescue halls versus, uh, versus halls that only have a pumper truck in them. Um, and then we try to, we try to be as consistent as possible and we try to make, you know, uh, we try to make choices that are financially sound, which is ultimately bringing this here today. The last thing I wanted to do was to, to create a contentious issue. But I saw an opportunity to, to order trucks in advance, save the M D some money. And then having that play out where the trucks are still delivered in the year that we were expecting them to be, to be replaced, with the exception of the Goodridge pumper, which it was due to be replaced this year, meaning it should have been ordered last year. Because if I ordered it today, I'm still not going to get it until probably, uh, springtime next year.
So, yeah, so my question was, uh, can you order customer, sorry, uh, tanker trucks off the lot?
Like, as in walk in and there's one there sitting to buy?
Tanker.
No.
You can't.
No.
Okay.
If we, if we drove to Winnipeg right now, any finished truck that's sitting on their lot is already spoken for.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, to answer Counselor Crick's question, uh, we put annually aside and it floats based on the value of the truck that's being put in the equipment reserve. Um, but, uh, last year was a touch over eight hundred thousand, this year was a touch under seven hundred thousand. So I, I, I would suggest for rough numbers in around that seven hundred thousand dollars a year is what goes in specifically for fire trucks.
So by two thousand twenty-four, we'd have the money in budget more or less?
Correct.
One more comment from everybody.
Uh, Counselor, Counselor, sorry.
Go ahead. Counselor Cravie.
Counselor Fedev has one last comment.
Yes, Counselor Fedev.
Actually, I, I do.
Okay.
Uh, no, I just, uh, you know, I really want to sit down and, and, you know, talk about some matrix later on and, uh, and get that done, so.
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I'm in favor of supporting this, but I would like to talk about the, the matrix later on as well, so.
Counselor Carson? He waves.
I wave. I'll save my comments for later.
Yeah, you're good too, I'm good. All right, I seeing no more discussion, all is in favor of this motion? Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Um, I, I hesitate to bring this up, but now that council's committed to a two point nine three five million dollar purchase, I'm going to need council to direct administration to find that money from someplace. So, um, I don't know that it has to happen today because I, I doubt tenders, or when are tenders going out?
We're, we're doing a spec, I'll be released tender for a month.
So we'll, we'll come back to council at the next council meeting with a discussion about, about how that money gets allocated. Uh, I think we have to have that money set aside. Will there be money by twenty twenty-four? Yes, but we've committed to a purchase today, which, which I, I think best practice is, is we need to have that money set aside, uh, um, to buy something.
Counselor Carson?
Okay, well, he, I guess you kind of answered it. I get, I only voted in favor because I assumed that putting seven hundred thousand dollars away over the next two years was going to be enough to cover the cost of these, right, so.
And if they come in in twenty twenty-three? We've, we've committed today to a two point nine million dollar purchase.
You're saying if they all come in, in the twenty twenty-three?
And we don't know, like, all I'm suggesting is you've committed today to a two point nine million dollar purchase, suggesting that maybe there's going to be some money in the future that, um, I don't think that's good financial practice. I think the good financial practice is to find the money in our budget today, set it aside under, under, um, either put it into the, into the equipment replacement fund to cover that in three years, because yes, it will be covered. But it, that if, uh, if Chief Heaney came to us in six months and said, trucks are ready, I need, I need a check, um, we're, uh, we're not caught, uh, um,
Yeah, I asked him that question, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Reeve? We're only paying for these trucks when we get them, are we not, Chief Heaney? Yeah, so there's, there's, like, so we're putting money away for the next twenty years or whatever. So I mean, I, I just assumed that we had, uh, you know, they've been doing this forever, we're putting money away.
So, uh, and, and, and I'll just ask the hard question. So council thinks that it's good financial practice to commit to a three million dollar purchase. Well, then any discussion as to where that money is coming from and how it's being allocated? That's, I, I just, that's my question to council. I'm fine with the purchase, I have no, I don't have a dog in the fight. My problem as the C E O, you've just committed to a three million dollar purchase without a discussion as to how we are going to allocate or set aside those funds which are currently not in a budget. We're talking about federating council's financial discretion two and three years down the road. We made a commitment today that you are going to be forced with, if you, if you continue down the same path, you have to put that money away. I, I just, to me, that, that is, that is prudent financial, uh, and that money is then set aside. When the trucks come, we pay for it and it's done. The equipment replacement fund will, will fund that back over the course of years. But you committed today, but we haven't had But you committed today, but we haven't had a discussion as to how we're paying for it. That's all I'm suggesting.
Counselor Kreviak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So we put, you said $800,000 last year and $700,000 this year, more or less?
Correct.
So weren't we putting money in every year, uh, some into this capital replacement program?
Correct.
So if we put in $700,000 a year for fifteen years, you'll have 10.5 million?
Correct, but that's not just for one or two or three or four trucks. That's for the entire MD of Bonneville fleet.
The other thing is, Mr. Reeve, uh, this does not have to be paid for till next year, so we can budget that in the fall for 2023, for 2024. That'll come in 2023.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just a comment that 2024, I think, was even the last one. Was that right, Chief Heaney? So, um, yeah, Mr. Sierra, I get it, uh, but if we're doing this properly, and I think, I think the fire authority has been, we're putting money away every year for these trucks. So I, I don't think it's a $3 million hit this year. We don't have to pay that out until, until 2024 is the last one. So anyway, I hope we're okay with that.
Well, we have to be right now.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, there is no hit for this year. It'll be next year and 2024.
Correct. Okay. Sorry, guys. I don't know exactly where we left off. I apologize.
Well, we did miss them at the beginning there.
We got that one. That was that one?
I, I think there's still-
Yes.
I think the CEO's still looking for where we're going to allocate this money from. We still haven't answered that question.
Yeah, he said we'll, we'll discuss it in the next, like, I'm pretty sure he just said that.
Okay, thanks.
It doesn't have to be done today, no.
Uh, we're going on to 7.3.1. Morning.
Good morning. So bylaw number 1794, the development authority bylaw. I have it for second and third reading today at the January 12th, 2022 regular meeting of council. Council approved redesignation of the MD of Bonneville's development authority and subdivision authority from the MPC, the Municipal Planning Commission, to council. As a result, administration has drafted a new development authority bylaw for consideration. Bylaw number 1794, the development authority bylaw, will repeal and replace the current bylaw 1121 and instead establish council as the development authority of the MD of Bonneville. This bylaw was presented to council and given first reading at the February 23rd, 2022 regular meeting of council. Attached as appendix A is the development authority bylaw number 1794. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw 1794 and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third.
Thank you.
To go to second reading?
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Counsel. Uh, sorry, Deputy Reeve Swagert for making a motion that bylaw 1794 being the bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87 to establish development authority of the municipality be given second reading. Any discussion on this?
Question. What if we have, uh, this for the CAO?
Okay, we'll wait till he comes back.
I'm just wondering if we have a long discussion in MPC, for MPC, uh, let's say it's many issues there. Are we going to, uh, call a special meeting or, or what? Otherwise, council could go till five, six o'clock. We'll be having lunch and supper.
Al, Al, we have a question, sorry, for one, just one second. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Mr. CEO through the Reeve, if, uh, there's a lot of issues for MPC, uh, could we call us, like, a special meeting for that?
Uh, correct. Through the Reeve to Counsel Kreviak and all of council, yes. A couple of things is, uh, should we find that in one month in particular, uh, that we have, um, uh, and, and that's a good news story, that there is suddenly a, um, a flood of development permit or subdivision applications? The, the Reeve, if for any reason, uh, could call a special council meeting, um-
Just to take care of that.
Just to deal with those MPC items. Uh, typically, uh, what is, uh, what, uh, what is nice about moving this back into council is there will be two meetings a month that our residents would be able to bring their, their subdivision or development permit applications opposed to a month. So that does actually increase our level of service. And if we find that we're suddenly really busy, um, uh, easy-peasy, uh, call a special council meeting or have a, a regular council meeting go a little bit longer than normal. But those, those are always, um, tools that are available at, at the Reeve's discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think with the two meetings, they have two opportunities, so twice a month instead of once a month. So it should, should inhale it quite easy, right now, anyway.
Yes, except you don't want to delay what's going to be in the first council meeting to the fourth council meeting if there's many items, you know? They have to be dealt with right away. That's all.
All right, any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Uh, now I need a third. Counselor Crick makes a motion that bylaw number 1794 be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. 7.32.
So the next one I have he, for you is bylaw number 1795, the subdivision authority bylaw for second and third reading. At the January 12th, 2022 regular meeting of council, council did approve redesignating the MD of Bonneville's subdivision authority from the Municipal Planning Commission to ca- to council. As a result, administration has drafted a new development authority bylaw, or sorry, subdivision authority bylaw for consideration. Bylaw number 1795, the subdivision authority bylaw, will repeal and replace bylaw number 1123 and instead establish council as the subdivision authority for the MD of Bonneville. This bylaw was presented to council and given first reading on February 23rd, 2022. Attached as appendix A is the subdivision authority bylaw. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number 1795 and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
You know, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Scarsen. Uh, he makes a motion that bylaw number 1795 being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87 to establish subdivision authorities of the municipality to be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Need a third? Thank you, Counselor Kreviak. He makes a motion that bylaw number 1795 be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. On to 733.
So bylaw number LU 573 is amending land use bylaw for second and third readings with the redesignation of the MD of Bonneville's development authority and the minis- from the Municipal Planning Commission to council. Bylaw number 1667, the land use bylaw, needs to be amended to reflect this change. The current land use bylaw refers to MPC frequently throughout the document as the municipality's development authority. This proposed bylaw, number LU 573, amends the land use bylaw to make it compliant with the change of development authority to council. Additionally, with the recent amalgamation of ID 349 lands, the municipality through the province of Alberta ordering council, administration has incorporated two new direct control districts for these newly required lands. A public hearing was held March 23rd, 2022 with no negative correspondence or communication received or brought forth at that public hearing. So attached as appendix A is the proposed changes to the land use bylaw. Administration is recommending council give second reading and furthermore, if carried, proceed to third reading.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion of second? Thank you, uh, Deputy Reeve Swagert. Uh, makes a motion that bylaw number LU 573 being a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87 to be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. I need third, please. Counselor Crick, uh, Counselor Crick makes motion that bylaw number LU 573 be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. On to 734.
So bylaw number 1798 is for road closure, cancellation and sale. Administration is requesting a decision for a first reading for this bylaw for government road allowance closure, cancel and sale, which would authorize the closure, say, cancel and sale of a portion of government road allowance just west of the southwest of 21 and the northwest of 16, 62 of 8. The sale is, oh, is to be used for access to the northwest of 16, 62 of 8 for a proposed subsequent subdivision of the southeast of 20, 62 of 8 and consolidation so that the subdivision and portion of road allowance into the northwest of 16, 62 of 8, as shown on this appendix B. So a copy of the application for closure for government road allowance was provided to infrastructure services, agricultural services, as well as public safety and the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. If bylaw 1798 is given first reading, a public hearing will be scheduled to be provide opportunity for anyone claiming to be affected by the road closure to be heard. Following that public hearing, the bylaw would then be sent to Alberta Transportation for approval before being able to proceed to a second reading. This process is accordance with section 22 of the Municipal Government Act. So administration is recommending that council give first reading to bylaw number 1798 and furthermore, is recommending that council set the public hearing date for May 25th, 2022.
Thank you. Uh, looking for a first reading? Motion, yeah?
Mr. Reeve, I, uh, I don't quite get, uh, the area there. I'm not sure who's familiar with that. Mr. Counsel Kreviak, maybe? But I'm, I'm just, uh, curious why we're actually selling a road allowance?
Yes, uh, through the Reeve.
So there's two road, we're, it's a township road and a range road. We're selling pieces of both?
Nope. Um, so actually, in that southeast of 20, 62 of 8, where, where you can see that red box, there's a road built through there, but it is not a road allowance or a road plan. So the applicant is looking to subdivide that out as well as a portion of the road allowance of Range Road 464 and consolidate it into that northwest of 16 on the bottom right of that screen to make that access to the northwest of 16.
I'm not sure if, sorry, I'm not sure if I'm clear then. So Township Road 623?
It ends right there where that red box starts.
But that's, that's the road allowance, though. So there's still a road allowance there?
Mr. Reeve.
Just to the west of the red box, yes. But where that red box is, there is no road allowance. It stops right there.
Well, no, the road stops there, right?
Yeah, it's a forced road. There's no road allowance that goes through there.
It's a forced road.
Yeah.
623 shouldn't even be there. It's a forced road.
Oh, okay.
So the road, the roads are to the north or to the south of that quarter sections. So that's just a forced, right?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, Range Road 484 is north of Glendon, straight north of Glendon. And any odd number township is a forced road. So you have 620 and then you have 624. 622, I mean. And 623 is a forced road, so it's not actual road allowance.
Yeah, correct.
So there's no, I'll just ask again. So there's no future requirement ever to, that the MD would ever want to continue a road through there? I mean, if you, because if you sell it, you, you can't go back, right?
Well, that road right now does give access to the southeast of 20 and it would still give access with that portion subdivided out and consolidated into that other parcel as well.
I'm not sure if I quite understand that, though.
I'm just, Mr. Reeve, I'm just wondering, uh, why the MD, uh, had that as theirs? That was part of the MD, this?
Which was part of the MD, I'm sorry.
This red, uh, this red rectangular box. Is that part of the MD now?
No, so this is the subsequent, uh, subdivision that the applicant wants to do. So we're looking for that road closure for that little bit on that, on that Range Road 464. And then subsequently, they are going to put in a subdivision application to do that other bit and have that whole consolidated in. Because without that other portion in the southeast of 20, there is no access to that part that we are looking to close.
Okay, I'll go. Yes, go ahead, Al.
Um, and I would also add that the Range Road 484, um, I, I've been out there. Uh, I was, uh, I went out there with, uh, Ms. Kimbaugh and, uh, and Counselor Kreviak, um, working with the Kwiatowski's on this. There will never be a road built on 484. That is, uh, um, um, it's just, it's, it would be, we'd be building a bridge, uh, on that road. Uh, the other road, 623, where it ends on the, on, at, at the east, uh, uh, at, at the end of 623, um, before the red box, both those quarters, all four of those quarters are able to be serviced by that road. So there is, uh, um, it would be nothing we would build through, particularly with the subdivision for Kwiatowski's who want to build their home just on, just that bottom right-hand corner of the screen is kind of the area where they want to build their home.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
That road that's in the red there, that was made by an oil company to have access to oil company, so.
Yeah, it's already there.
And they already purchased, I think, and made a deal with the oil company, so, yeah.
So I gotta ask again. I'm a slow, slow learner here. So the area in red, they want to, they want to, uh, subdivide that, uh, to add it to their existing property?
To add it to the property on the southeast of that little box, the northwest of 16, 62 of 8. So that quarter, the northwest of 16, will be odd-shaped. It'll be a quarter. And then it'll also come off on that little red box.
Okay, and then the little sections of, of 620 or 484, um, the little section that jets down, what's the significance of that little piece also?
So through the Reeve, that is the portion of road allowance that we are looking to close today. We're looking for first reading. So once closed and sold, that would then have part, come a part of that subdivision into that quarter.
Mr. Reeve, yeah, 484, uh, through the Reeve to Counsel Swagert. Uh, on Range Road 484, both north and south of that red rectangle, there is deep ravines, so that road will never be built. You can't build a road through two ravines going north and one going south, as the CEO Hogan saw.
Okay, thank you. You can build a road of the new mountain goat equipment, though we don't have that yet.
If he had a knife, he'd throw, if he had a knife, he'd throw it at you right now, Mike. Um, so we need a, we need a motion for first here.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Kreviak makes a motion that bylaw number 1798 being the bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87 to close, cancel and sell a portion of the government road allowance approximately 176 meters in the length west of southwest 21 and northwest 16, 62, 8, west of the fourth meridian be given first reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. And then we need, uh-
Chair?
Yes?
Uh, can we do a second reading as well and then just keep third for, for the final?
Yep, through the chair, we do need to do a public hearing before second reading.
For that, Kate, thanks.
Yes.
This has to go to the minister. Okay, we need a motion to go to public hearing?
Sure.
Once again, Counselor Kreviak, thank you, uh, makes, uh, the council approves May 25th, 2022 at 10:00 AM as a date and time for the bylaw number 1798 public hearing. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
I would just like to publicly thank the planning department. This kind of came at us, uh, um, later in the year last year. It required a bit of thought as to how, uh, the Kwiatowski's could get their home built kind of off the beaten path there. And, and I think our planning department has done a phenomenal job about finding some, uh, some alternate, uh, thinking outside the box and finding some alternate ways, uh, um, to, uh, to service our, our residents who want to build out there. So I'd just like to say thank you to Lisa and all her staff for, for the time and effort put into this.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Echo, echo your words, uh, Mr. CEO. And it's a very beautiful place for a home to be built, surrounded by trees and wildlife.
Thank you. Well, good job. Good to hear. On to 735.
So 735 is the municipal regulations for beekeeping. Administration was requested to provide a report to council regarding our current regulations pertaining to the keeping of bees in apiaries within the MD of Bonneville, as well as in adjacent municipalities. Save the Bees has become a social movement to help foster bee activity. The University of Alberta reports that Alberta, Saskatchewan and Manitoba produce 79% of Canadian honey and that prairie canola and other crops are very heavily dependent on bee pollination. In the province of Alberta, the keeping of bees is regulated under the Alberta Bee Act and its associated regulations. Registration with the province is required for all hives by the end of June every year, regardless of their scale of operation. Beekeeping is currently an allowable discretionary use in the MD of Bonneville in the agricultural district as per our land use bylaw. More specifically, beekeeping is included under the definition of intensive agricultural, which is listed as a dis- excuse me, which is listed as a discretionary use in the agricultural district. As shown on appendix A, adjacent municipalities have similar requirements for beekeepings. In the town of Bonneville, they do not address beekeeping in the land use bylaw. However, it is addressed as prohibited in their animal control bylaw. In 2019, they did issue a special approval permit for one hive, but added numerous conditions. In Laclebiche County, it is permitted in the agricultural district. It is also discretionary use in their country residential district, B31. This is an existing zoning that they have said that no additional lands are permitted to be redistrict to. So it's kind of- So it's kind of grandfathered into that district. The city of Cold Lake, they have it permitted in their urban reserve district under the definition of agricultural operation extensive. So what we are recommending that council directs administration to be, to bring back additional information regarding the feasibility of increasing the allowance of level for keeping of bees within the municipality to a future meeting for council for consideration.
Yep.
Mr. Reeve, you're probably wondering why we're asking about this, right? And so I had a resident ask about two years ago, um, well, it's about a year and a half ago, two years ago. He had a, two beehives, uh, it's actually a river bend, so off Highway 55, three acre parcels of land. There's like, I don't know, 40 different parcels there. And, uh, our land use bylaw doesn't allow it. And so he was, uh, they reacted to that because apparently some, somebody complained and no one knows really who it was, but, um, it seemed weird that he couldn't have two beehives. Uh, he lives on three acres and he backs onto kind of farm fields, so. Anyway, I just thought we could look at it and, uh, this guy, gentleman, is going to actually write us a letter requesting maybe a variance or whatever so that he can actually have two beehives this, this spring and set them up. And I, I talked to him last night. It was interesting. Uh, he got about 150 pounds of honey last year from, from two beehives. So I don't think it's an issue. Um, and I'm just surprised we don't allow it. So I'm hoping that we can either change our land use bylaw or give him a variance, but I'd, I'd suggest changing the land use bylaw.
Counsel Fadai?
Yeah, I have to agree. Uh, there's people out there that are doing it already. Uh, let's keep them legal and let's change it.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Was that a motion or?
It was, didn't you hear me?
Yes, I, I did. I got a, I got a little bit of something in this here. So we're gonna s-
Yeah, just, uh, the, uh, uh, I guess it'd be option number one to get them to bring back more information so we can make these people compliant.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Fadai. Uh, he makes a motion that council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding the feasibility of increasing the allow level for the, for the keeping of bees within the municipality to a future meeting of council for consideration. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, are we stop, are we running right through today or are we going to stop for?
There's, uh, I'll just check, I'll, lunch is ordered, so might finish by then.
Yeah, well, she sat down, so I thought it was Clayton, yeah. All right, let's just shut down now.
Is Ellen me coming then or?
Uh, don't think so.